Running at five o'clock in the morning. He needs to get in shape. He's slow, like me.
It's four fifteen. Just a quick question. Do we have the people all lined up?
Yeah, the first one. Debbie is here.
Well, it's four fifteen. I'll call the meeting to order. A special city council meeting for January twenty nine, twenty twenty five. Please join me as we rise for the predilegance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, et in terra noster.
Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here. Thank you, Teresa. We're here this evening to begin our interview process for candidates interested in the positions of American Canyon, Open Space, Active Transportation, and Sustainability Commission, and also the Park and Community Services Commissions for interviews. After the interviews are concluded, tonight we'll have the council take all the ballots, calculate them up, provide them to our city clerk, Teresa, and then she will provide us with the results of the rankings of the candidates. Are we ready for our first candidate?
Can we? I thought we were going to talk a little bit about the process, given the fact that we now have three candidates for three slots. I think the, we might want to consider a shift from one extreme of saying, congratulations, you're all in, and the other extreme of having a twenty-minute interview. To me, it almost seems like we want to look more of a pass fail. Is there anybody on here who we'd rather say, let's just keep recruiting? Or are we comfortable with everybody? So then what it boils down to is, I think, maybe one or two questions might be appropriate.
Yeah.
I think Councilmember Oro made a similar suggestion.
Yeah, I don't mind a modification, but I have to give them some thoughts. I actually know two of the candidates really well. The first one, I would suggest that we go through the full process, and just because I think that has the most questions. And then for the latter two, one's recorded, as I understand. But for the second one, I think it's probably more of an open conversation. And kind of have that, kind of have that.
Yeah.
And then in terms of the video, I don't mind seeing it. Did it run the full twenty minutes? Do you know?
Yes, so we.
Of course it did, it was Barry.
Yeah, it was Barry. He gave, it's, yeah, Barry's traveling. He's out of state. So I did a Zoom call with him and asked all the questions. I timed it. And he's probably right around the twenty-minute mark. And yeah, he answered everything very thoroughly.
Okay. I'd like to hear from Councilmember Lamatina, if you have an opinion.
Yeah, I say we go through the whole interview process, so we have a thorough understanding of everyone, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz?
I do agree, for the sake of transparency, I think we should go through the whole process. I mean, you folks that's been here for a while may know these individuals thoroughly, but I don't. So I'd like to go through it.
Fair enough.
And that's fair. And then also the people who are viewing may not know all the candidates. And it gives them an opportunity to answer the questions that would fulfill the position. So I guess we'll go through, if we can get a vote, if we go through the entire process.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go through the full process for all three candidates.
I'll second.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call? And thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up.
Well, I think it's a good question to have, and I think the discussion helped because I think it's a good point. We may know some of the candidates. It doesn't mean everybody else does.
Very true.
For your vote, Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Get the first candidate.
Just here for the process? Jeez.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Debbie?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Debbie, and welcome. Just to let you know tonight's process, kind of want to give you an overview of what to expect. We will be giving you twenty minutes in total, and the council will be asking you two questions, a series of questions. And you have a total, so you have a total of ten questions that you'll be asked. We thank you, actually, and appreciate the fact that you even put your name in the hat to be considered. So thank you for your interest in applying for this very important position. With that said, tonight we'll start off with Councilmember David Oro with the first question.
Thank you.
Laura's yours.
Thank you. And it's, make sure I'm saying this right. It's Ms. Shavaro, right?
Shavaria.
Shavaria. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Open Space, Active Transportation, and Sustainability Commission.
Yes, my name is Debbie Shavaria, and I've been a resident of American Canyon for twenty-three years now. I love my adopted city, and I'm interested in participating and being part of the commission because my passion lies in environment sustainability. I've been an advocate ever since I had an after-school job back in college at the United States Environmental Protection Agency, where I learned a lot about helping and maintaining our environment. And I've been very, very, very passionate, and I've been working in every community that I've been able to, whether it be a job or a school, even in my neighborhood as well. And I think I could contribute to your committee, and I would be an asset to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Hello, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
My question for you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's open spaces?
Well, right now, I really, really enjoy our open spaces. I think it's beautiful, the wetlands, Newell's space. So my vision would be possibly to get the word out a little bit more to our community. I do not believe that it's accessed as much as it could be. My husband is an avid runner, marathon runner, and he enjoys open space. I love hiking and walking with my girls, always have. And I think probably expanding that information to my neighbors and community would be very beneficial. And I love to talk to people in our community from Starbucks to Safeway to neighbors to parks. So, you know, I have no problem advocating for more people to use that, and just to know that it's there and how beautiful it really is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Yes, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
If we appointed you to the commission, what would you like to accomplish?
Well, as I stated, my passion is environment, and I think communication is important. And basically, I would like to accomplish being a little bit more vocal about who we are in American Canyon, our town, and how we are a gateway to the rest of the valley. I do not think that we're always appreciated as such. And so I would like to put the word out that we are this beautiful space. And I think a lot of people are beginning to appreciate and acknowledge who we are in this wonderful Mediterranean climate that we have here. So I think that just being a part of the group who's like-minded, I believe I can learn a lot from you all, and I can contribute what my background also has brought me to this place.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi, Debbie. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
So my question to you is, why should we select you over other candidates?
I believe you should select me because I am a hard worker. I can be very focused, and I'm a good team player. I also work very well individually, and I care about people, animals, environment. I am part of an organization that is a volunteer organization in San Francisco, actually, that focuses on helping animals and the homeless. And I'd like to bring some of that knowledge and expertise and experience here as well. So I think that you would not be disappointed with me, and you can utilize me for a lot of different things within the community.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have your first question, or the last question of the first series. One of the aspects, one of the three aspects of OSATs is the active transportation piece. What would your vision be for American Canyon from a active transportation standpoint?
As far as active transportation, I do believe there does need some work in that area. As far as the bus service, possibly having it more accessible, I would have to basically learn a little bit more about how that might work. I know that my daughters try to use the bus, and it's very hard, and because it doesn't come. It comes, but not as frequently as we'd like it to. I know that also the trails, you know, the connection up into Napa would be beneficial for those who like to bike more. So actually being accessible and asking more people in the community what they would need would be something that I could do. I would be open to having neighbors and community members, you know, email me or even call me. So I would be open to that, and I would definitely respond in a timely manner.
Sounds like you're willing to solicit people to reach out to you to give you some feedback.
Oh, yes, yes. I.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hand the questions back over to Councilmember David Oro.
Yeah, so open space, active transportation, and sustainability are seemingly unrelated subjects. Can you tell us why they should go together? And do you have examples of municipalities of where it's being done well or not?
Yes, so the three, I believe, actually do come together. I understand that they're separate, but to think of them coming together is that there has to be a consciousness as to how we go about planning things as far. there has to be a consciousness as to how we go about planning things as far as transportation and say, the commute up into the valley and how does that impact the rest of the environment? The pollution that that brings, um, to us. And so I, I do think that at one time when I, I grew up and lived in San Francisco, that the muni service was very good. It came on time and it, it worked very well and a lot of, really, having a car was kind of an afterthought. So if we had a good transportation system in which we were able to really assess the pollutants maybe in the area and how to minimize that so that more people could take public transportation and then possibly reduce the pollution that goes out from so many cars. Because, you know, here I really feel that there's just too many, too many cars and too much reliability on cars. But that's what we have right now and there's definitely a lot of growth there. I feel that we can change that or at least try to balance it a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina.
What is your vision for sustainability in American Canyon?
My vision for sustainability would be to increase our awareness for possibly using more public transportation if that became available, trying to do that, put the word out for that. Also, I think we do a decent job with recycling. But, you know, I do notice, you know, trash sometimes in the parks, uh, maybe being more aware of that and communicating to the rest of the residents what they can do. And actively, you know, sometimes I just, I pick up garbage off of this, you know, streets or the parks and my daughter's like, hmm. Even though we've done coastal clean, cleanup and, uh, things like that, it's just not something that I think is instinctual in a lot of people. There's no judgment there, but I think just getting the word out that we can do more as a community and that it would benefit everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes. How would you go about developing a good working relationship between OSATs and the city council? Uh, both in terms of you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the commission, uh, working, working with the council and building that relationship?
I would definitely attend as many meetings as possible. The meetings that are for the Open Space Commission, of course I wouldn't miss those. And I would try to attend all the others as well. And I think the communication there would be beneficial. Could you repeat that last part again, is that?
Basically, the idea is how do you improve our working relationships so that the council and the commission are kind of on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, communication is an element, but how would you go about achieving that?
I think I would do, as I just said, just also attending the meetings, but do more research on the past meetings and what we really envisioned as, as a whole. And I have, I do not have a problem reaching out to Councilmember, Mayor, um, because I've always been very, very active as much as I could as far as voting is concerned, you know. I never missed an election. So I think just having that communication would be important and coming to you directly with any concerns. That also from my neighbors and people that I talk to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, Debbie, what do you think the council's priorities for the OSAT commission should be and why?
Um, I think the priorities should be that we are all on the same page and that, because when I looked through the webpage, I found it kind of hard to tell, you know, where the minutes were. I mean, I found them, but then they weren't, I didn't find a lot of information. I think having more information would be, would be good for everybody because I'm actively doing this, I'm trying to learn more. So for those who are not actively, how do they, you know, do that? So I think trying to remedy that and then that would cause, I think, people to be more involved as a community and that's important and-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay Debbie, you're almost done.
Okay.
I got the final question for you.
All right.
You look like you're very comfortable up there though.
Okay, good, thank you.
My final question for you is describe how you might handle a situation if met resistance, if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy.
How would I react? I would bring the data that I feel was important to show, to display. And I would listen and I would communicate as well as I could and I wouldn't take anything personally. That's what I would do.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, one, we all appreciate you taking the time and the interest to serve in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
This basically concludes the question part. Um, we will interview the final other two people and then we'll call you back inside the room and then we'll give you the, uh, end results, but you did a great job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate all of you, thank you for your time, thank you.
There she is. Hey, Nance.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mayor and Council, thank you for having me today.
Mm-hmm.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're coming in loud and clear. Um, good evening and welcome, Nance, just to let you know, um, the process for this evening. Um, you have twenty minutes total time, uh, and the council will have two series of questions, uh, for you, so a total of ten questions. Uh, first, I'd like to let you know we thank you for, uh, and appreciate you for your interest in, um, actually returning to the OSAT. Um, with all that said, uh, we'll start off tonight with Councilmember David Oro. David, it's yours.
Nance, you and I know each other for a very long time.
Yes.
And I think you know a few of the council members here for a long time. We've decided to continue with this process because there's new council members and there's people in the audience who may not know you as well. Um, so I'm gonna ask a question that I already know.
So do you want to answer it too?
No. That's your job and that's why you were invited here today. So tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission.
Okay, I'm Nance Mattson, I've lived in American Canyon since two thousand and one. And, um, we made a decision early on, rather than moving back to the East Bay because of Sandy's job situation, we decided to stay here and get involved. Um, and I think I was a member of the Friends of Open Space before Open Space was, uh, created as a committee. Um, was Chair of, of Open Space for however many years, twelve, fourteen, I don't know how many years we were a committee and then, uh, moved to a commission. Um, very gladly adding in the sustainability part, um, because I have experience in that area. And through the many years of being in Open Space, understanding our open space issues, our bicycle issues, PEDs issues. Um, so I'm, and I'm excited about the change in how the commission is working with staff and I, you know, I think I talked to a few of you and said, yeah, I think I'm done. No, I'm not done, I want to play some more, so. Um, I'm a mechanical engineer, retired, um, trying to think what else. Uh, former Girl Scout leader, Sierra Club hike leader. Uh, just got back from riding a bicycle four days in New Zealand that was amazing on trails and hope we can provide that to our community as well, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Lamatina.
Hello.
Hi there.
Thanks for being here. My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's open spaces?
Just open space?
Yeah, open spaces.
Okay. Um, continuing to, you know, see people out on the trails and joining our open spaces. We went out the other day, I think it was Sunday afternoon, the parking lot was full at Wetlands Edge. Um, it's just great seeing people out there. Um, I think we have more to do in Newell, um, there's other opportunities. Um, just seeing the community enjoy it and make it their own has been just an amazing process. So my vision is to continue that and build on it.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Nance, how are you doing?
I'm good, you?
Okay, fine, fine, that's my question.
How am I doing, I'm great, I'm good. Okay, so-
No, what, you've been on the commission as long as anyone, but what would you like to accomplish in the next four years if we give you another shot at it or continue it?
Well, expanding our open space work, our bikes and PED work. We're getting a lot of traction on developing more, you know, painted bike lanes and class one bike lanes in town. Um, sustainability, we've barely touched and I feel like that's an area as a council and a commission, we need to figure out where we go and staff, of course, because staff is who holds this all together for us. But, um, what our goals are in terms of sustainability and how we can move ourselves as a commission and the, the council and staff together to achieve whatever that, that goal is. I know, I think, Mark and Pierre, you were on that ad hoc committee. Um, we looked at it, I think, once to try to rank some things, but we haven't moved past that. So I want to see us move further in sustainability and continue with the great work that's been going on in open space and, and bikes and PEDs.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Hi, Nance, how are you?
Hi there, I'm good, you?
Good. Okay, so my question for you is, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Good question, because I always feel like, and I've always said, if there's someone else you think will do a greater job or you're ready to see someone else up there, go for it. Um, but I feel like all my experience being on the commission and committee, um, and being a member of this community, I think I add a lot. Um, when we were deciding about, the council was deciding about whether to, you know, move open spaces work to others, you know, went through and make it a whole list of what had happened in all those years of open space, the documentation, I think the institutional knowledge is important, but I think it's also important to have new people, so.
Well, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Nance, I have the first of two questions for you, um, for me. Uh, and one, I served on, on OSAT with you and I learnt a lot from you when I was on there, so I appreciate what you bring to the table. Uh, my question for you, uh, one of the aspects, or one of the newer aspects of, uh, OSATs is the active transportation. What's your, what is your, uh, vision for American Canyon with the, um, uh, active transportation piece?
Yeah, actually, um, the Open Space Committee was the bike committee all along. So Open Space, um, developed the bike plan for American Canyon that NAPA, uh, NVTA adopted. Um, so we've always been trying to, to push, where can we put bike paths? How can we make it more, um, available for people? Um, one thing I did this, I think in November, is I helped the Bike Coalition do a survey of bike parking in American Canyon. And I was shocked at the lack of bike parking in Mike Quodran of the city that included three major developments and an apartment complex. And I saw that, um, Veterans Park has great bike parking, some, two here, I think, one set of bike, uh, parking spots. And Walgreens and Seven-Eleven did, but the rest of that corner of American Canyon has no bike parking. So if we want people to bike, we need to have them to be able to store their bikes safely. Um, and also to increase the amount of bike lanes and also awareness of bikes and PEDs. And, um, maybe some way of, of education in terms of, this is how, how long it'll take you to bike from your house to Safeway versus drive, it's probably about the same amount of time. So I think that we have a number of things to do in terms of active transportation.
Yeah, probably the same amount of time, but healthier.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, I'll pass the second set of questions to, uh, Councilmember Oro.
It, it's the same amount of time going into Safeway and then a little bit harder on the way back, um, downhill.
You have things to carry then.
And then I got stuff to carry too, but it is a lot more fun to do. Um, so thi- this is more of a thought process kind of question, no right or wrong way, but and you're part of this whole process too when we were deliberating how to create this commission. Open space and active trans, open space, active transportation and sustainability are seemingly unrelated subjects. Can you tell us why they should go together and do you have any examples of places where it's been done well or not?
Um, I can think about my workplace, that, um, when I first got my electric car, um, there was a letter from Department of Energy that said employees could charge their cars at work. And then they withdrew that letter, saying, you, you're getting something other employees aren't getting. So they put together a system to, uh, to charge us, to charge, to charge our cars there. Um, but as a way to, to make the lab community aware of that's an option to do, is that if you want to have an electric car, this is how we're gonna accommodate you on campus. This is how we're gonna get your bikes up the hill on the, the shuttle, et cetera. All these things work together because sustainability makes a better, better community, better environment. Community works together to, to get to these goals. So I think in some ways they're separate topics, but there's some overlapping. You know, encouraging people to bike is gonna improve our greenhouse gases, or reduce our greenhouse gases, excuse me. I think it's an area we, we really need to figure out how we're going to work in sustainability and how we're gonna, uh, what's important. And I agree with you, it's like, how do these things tie together? I think there's some, some overlap, but there's also some distance between them.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lamatina.
What is your vision for sustainability in American Canyon?
I guess my vision would be awareness and participation. Making sure, you know, recycling programs are, are being as efficient as they can. Transportation is being efficient, people are using alternative transportation. Making available to people, I was thinking about when we went through the drought the first time. And there was, and maybe there was government funding to help with this, but there was a lot of city outreach to the community on, you know, how to, how to build a rainwater collection item, how to, how to do this, how to do that. I almost think we need to do something like that around sustainability, education, here's the path to rebates and programs. You know, public outreach.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes. Um, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the council and the commission? Both in terms of you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the overall commission?
Um, I think that it's important to have that person-to-person contact and get to know the other commissioners, the, the city, the various city council people and figure out how to work together and communicate. We don't want the commission to be something that's working over here and the council's over here, we're just throwing things to you and not really explaining why and how and what's important to us. And I think our, you know, our annual meetings we've been ha, we started having, I think are helping with that. But I think also this, those casual interactions of, hey, this is coming up, our meeting, do you have any, you know, opinions and suggestions as to how we should approach it?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, so Nance, what do you think the council's priorities- Okay, so Nance, what do you think the council's priorities for the commission should be and why?
The council's priorities. I think number one priority is to look at funding we have and make sure we're using it. And figuring out how to achieve getting projects done in a timely way so we can leverage that for other projects. I think we're finally getting the Newell project done, the Wetlands project done, they've been on the books for a while. So looking, and also looking at what's easy to do. What's, you know, and what makes sense for continuity of plans. Like we've got a plan for the bicycle plan and ped plan. We don't have a real good plan right now for sustainability. So I think that's, that's critical, is that if the commission is going to help guide, give ideas, work with staff and council on sustainability, we've got to figure out what that is.
Great, thank you.
I hope that's helpful.
Yes, it was, thank you.
And I have your last and final question, Nance. And obviously you're a subject matter expert in this field, so I appreciate you. Describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy.
Ah, yes. Well, we had a situation recently where we had a meeting with the land trust and with staff. And we found out that maybe e-bikes weren't going to be allowed in Newell, and we were like, oh, wow. And talking it through and trying to figure out, you know, do we need to have this on our agenda and work it through? Staff and the land trust worked on it and figured it out, and it's all good, e-bikes in Newell, bikes in Newell, it's all good. But often when you have a really strong, we had a lot of bicyclists come that night to, you know, they were really upset. And what helped was discussing it as a group and trying to, you know, ask staff, okay, can we talk about this at another meeting? You know, it's not, it's a, it's a, it looks like it's a big enough issue that we should do that. And so we kind of put that on the parking lot for, at some point. And before we were able to talk about it, staff had resolved it, which was wonderful. We were all very excited about that. But I think what it takes is just listening and trying to understand what the issues are. And is there a way to resolve it within our structure? Because we're working off a work plan from you guys that you guys have approved every year. So we have to make sure we're still working within the structure that we've been, have had set out for us.
Very good, very good. Well, I appreciate you taking the time and the interest in serving our community continuously. That concludes our questions for tonight. We still have one more person that we need to interview, and then we'll probably call you back. But we will call you back in for the results. So thank you, Nance.
Great, thank you all.
For the next person, Madam Clerk, since it is a pre-recorded video.
Deppel's going to press play, you have it.
Okay.
I am here with Barry Christian, and we are going to conduct his OSAT interview today. Barry, you have 20 minutes. I'm going to set a timer on my phone. And there are 10 questions, so you have about two minutes to answer each question, okay?
20 minutes, great. You only get three minutes at public comment.
I know, you got to make it quick so we can get through it all. Okay, so question number one, tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission?
Okay, I think most of you know that, and this is to city council, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think most of you know that I've, I've been on the Open Space Advisory Committee for, I think, 15 years at least. It goes back to, what, 2007, 2008, something like that. And I was interested in public, in public trails, public access to open space areas. And I maintain that, that interest. I've, I'm with a number of other groups that are all some way involved with parks, trails and open space. So it's something that I'm interested in and I have a history of, and I believe that I can contribute.
Thank you. What is your vision for American Canyon's open spaces?
I think we've done really well. We were lucky that the Newell family donated 640 acres. And then also that Fish, Department of Fish and Game wanted to restore the salt ponds, the Cargill salt ponds. So both of those became wonderful opportunities for us to have these amazing open space areas. Newell is beautiful in its own right. It's a lot quieter up there than, compared to the Wetlands trails, which are really heavily used. And I remember our original contractor said, you're going to be surprised how many people use these trails. And, and we are, that parking lot is often full and, and, and so I, I think we've done great, but we've never really put aside money. The one difference is that Mark Joseph, his, his Public Works Director, John Woncombe, proposed getting a grant and purchasing the Clark Ranch and all of that. So the city did have an interest, and kudos to Mark and John for that, that, that got us the Clark Ranch area, that helped us connect with those Wetlands trails. But other than that, the city hasn't really put away any money. And when we do development, we don't take money out of the development fees and put a fund there for purchasing land. So I think there's some great opportunities that the vineyard, the Gilbert Vineyard might have been one. Some kind of a land bank, habitat conservation plan. I would like to see a few more areas that the city actually thinks about raising money and purchasing and, and adding to the Newell Open Space Preserve and the Wetlands.
Yeah. What would you like to accomplish while you're on the commission?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess I'll maybe cause some chaos and start some new plan and get everybody excited about some, like, purchase. I don't know, but, but really, we have done so well with the Newell Open Space and the Wetlands. I think maintaining those, managing the user interfaces, I think there's opportunities up at Newell for environmental renovation, for tree planting, for habitat restoration. Wetlands, I don't know that we can do that much more out there, but I, I don't think there's that much more that needs to be done. The kayak launch is, is exciting with the ACCPF and what they're doing. So helping to guide that, steward that and create opportunities there would be, would be good. I don't see any one specific proposal like we had originally, which was either getting access to Newell or getting access to the Wetlands. We got those. So I don't see something like that. There is a trail on the Wetlands that, when you get to the Brazos Railroad Bridge, I would still like to connect along the river all the way up to Napa Sanitation. The Fish and Game and the airport have both fought us on that. To me, it still makes sense long-term to get that connection, so that would be interesting to pursue. It's a project on the radar of the Open Space District, but that district doesn't really have the money or the staff time to work on that at this time, even if they did get a grant.
Barry, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Oh, you shouldn't, I'm not going to, I don't even know who the other candidates are. And I think anybody who comes in and wants to donate their time to the city and be involved, I think it's, it's terrific. I would, I would almost advise a diversity of people. So that you have some people who, I've been there a long time, but that gives me a little historical perspective, so has Nance. Nance has been a long time. But you need to bring new people into the group too, so diverse. Yeah, I'm not going to pitch myself as, as any better than anybody else. I think that's, I'll leave that up to city council to look at all the candidates. I, I plan to continue pretty much doing what I've been doing, but I recognize that there's, there's great people in our community and they can bring in new ideas and new energy. So I, I wouldn't really say that you should pick me over the others.
And what is your vision for American Canyon's active transportation?
Right, yeah, more connectivity. There's a, the county is updating their countywide bicycle plan right now. And it's going to be actually a combined bicycle and pedestrian plan. We still don't have sidewalks on Highway 29 running through the main part of the city, and that's, that's, I guess I've officially given up on that. It's, it's, I'm, I'm being facetious here, I think it'll happen. There's a lot of constraints and the money's there, and it's Caltrans right away, a lot of it. But there are some plans coming up, the corridor study and, and that. We're a priority conservation area, I think, PDA, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that'll happen, but just better trails, connectivity, people getting outside, managing conflicts. And with scooters now, with electric scooters, I'm seeing people, you know, going down Elliott Way in the, in the street, just on their scooter. Just, these new batteries can get you 10, 20, 30 miles on a charge. So I, I really think that that's a game changer and that there's no reason to take your car down to Safeway. You could jump on a little scooter or something. I'm hoping that, that there'll be even more innovations. So just more connectivity, safety, vision, vision zero is an initiative to, to get down to zero deaths from accidents. And NVTA is running that, and I think that's a great initiative. So there's a lot of stuff going on, more connectivity, more trails, more people going outside.
All right. Open space, active transportation and sustainability are seemingly unrelated subjects. Can you tell us why they should go together?
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways to do that, and I kind of know the, the history of how that OSATs got created from OSAC. And I was there when OSAC was created, so it's, it's kind of interesting how these things get started and, and go together. I, I don't, I don't know that there's a rationale specifically for why they should, but it's kind of what we've got. And so I'm more interested in just making it work and doing the best we can with it. There are some, there are some things where they line up and where it, where it does make sense. That doesn't mean there's not a better way to do it some way, but I, I think this is what we've got right now. And so my, my inclination is to just run with it and do the best we can. And if someone can articulate a better vision, then I'm, I'm all ears. But for the moment, I, I don't have any, any reason to want to change it or alter it.
Part two to that is, do you have any examples of municipalities where it's being done well or maybe not well? In terms of their open space or active transportation or sustainability?
Yeah, I think Marin County and Sonoma are always, have always been the leaders ahead of Napa County. Napa County's a little conservative. It gave away all its public right of way from Napa up to Calistoga to the automobile, basically. It just turned it over. So there were spots when the, when the Vintra was creating its trail, it just opened up from Calistoga to St. Helena. And it's working on St. Helena down to Yountville. There were spots you just could not go on the highway. It would be like, like just two feet or one feet, and cars going by at 60 miles an hour and you could reach out and touch them. Sonoma has been a great leader, Marin County, I know Todd Novak came from Marin, Marin County, Robin Myers. They were both on the Open Space Advisory Committee. I had, I grew up partly in Marin County, so the three of us all talked about it, yeah, Marin is just the leader in this, and Napa's like way behind. So I think Marin and Sonoma County has an open space district, an agricultural trust preserve, a county parks department. Napa only has an open space district, no county parks department. It has a land trust, but they're more focused on preserving land. They're, they're not big on public access, they're starting to get there. So, and in terms of bikes, San Francisco is doing amazing work, the Bike Coalition in San Francisco. So those people are all ahead of us, but we're, we're, we're using those as examples and we're coming along, and so there's, there's a lot we can do. And, and those are, those are the leaders, in my opinion.
What is your vision for sustainability in American Canyon?
Well, yeah, that's just, it's quite of a, quite of a big concept. My sense of the sustainability thing was that, that it was related to climate change and that we, you know, we want to reduce that. I don't know how much effect we in American Canyon will have on reducing the effects of climate change. We can build up for them and we can, you know, plan for them. I suppose if you look at it broadly, it could be how you, how you get rid of your garbage, how you power your cars, how you heat your homes, how you grow your food, there's just, there's a lot on the plate right there. I think there's been money recently for climate change initiatives. I think it's, I argued this before, that, hey, we need to, we need to be thinking about this. If for no other reason, then there's grant money out there that goes along with these kinds of projects. It's popular in the state, right, in the state of California. Maybe not any, not anymore on the national front, or at least right now. But I think there's a lot of opportunities there. It's, it's, it's a big subject. I guess that's all I can say on that at the moment.
How would you develop a good working relationship between the commission and city council? Making sure that commissioners understand council's priorities and that any commission concerns are communicated to council?
Yeah, I think the, the big part of that too is that you have to take into effect, into account city council and city staff. We've got a parks department, we've got a strong city manager. And the city manager and the city council have their own dynamics. And we have to, it's not just how we relate with the city council, it's how we relate with, with the city manager and city staff, the parks department and the, the public works department and, and all of that. So I think we have to keep in mind that it's, it's three legs of that stool, not, not just the two. Meeting with city council on a regular basis. Listening to their concerns, and then maybe our, maybe our commission could do more by asking city council, okay, what is it you want us to achieve? And I think they might be asking us the same question. So maybe it's just a continuing dialogue, but it, but it has to be all three. It has to be with city staff too, and, and the city council.
And what do you think the council's priorities for the commission should be and why?
Yeah, well, primarily we're there to, to give advice and to, to look at, look at that. We're also a conduit of sorts to the community because we can, we can talk to people and we can bring in ideas, you know. City council meeting, you might not have many visitors, you might not have people submitting comments or weighing in on things. But if you've got a, an engaged community in the form of commissions and, and networks like that, then you can, you can hear about things that maybe nobody on city council thought of previously. Just in terms of bringing in expertise and ideas, fresh ideas, experiences. And your earlier question about who's the leader on these issues. And so just to know that San Francisco Bike Coalition is doing a lot of really innovative things and that we, if we're paying attention to that, we can say, oh, why don't we do that up here? Like the green stripes on roadways, I think that might have come out of the city. I remember people in Napa talking about these green striped areas that were safe for bicycles. So there's a lot of different ideas. I mean, what an amazing population this country has and a lot of different ideas. And so if we can reach out and get those ideas and present them, I think that's a, a good role that we can do for city council, just to provide as much information and input as we can.
And here, this is your last question, Barry. Describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new idea or policy?
Gee, that's never happened to me before. We, we kind of got some resistance to asking for public access at Newell Open Space Preserve. And we just kept, kept on it. I, I think you just, you know, obviously you have to be polite with people. You have to maintain a good working relationship with people or you, you get nowhere. If you piss people off, the conversation's over. Dee Swanheiser was kind of a mentor to me. Dee was on the North Bay Planner for the Ridgedale. And she said she had been taught that you don't really want to push a landowner too far in terms of whether they'll donate a easement. You just don't want to get to no, because once somebody is at no, we're not going to do it, it's really, really hard to turn that around. It's really, really hard to turn that around and, and. And get to yes, so. You have to be careful about how you push. I think you can bring information, you can keep the conversation going. You can go out to the community and explain, info, we all need good information to make good decisions. So the more information we can generate. The better to say, you've got the best computer in the world, but if it's got lousy data, it's going to make lousy decisions, so. So bringing in information, keeping the dialogue going. Not pissing people off, not getting to know. Uh, and just. Being persistent, you know, uh, um. Sustained effort.
Okay, that's all I have for you today. Thank you, Barry. All right, thanks for being with me and.
Good luck with the decision.
After the interview, um, concludes, uh, with council, I'll email you and let you know.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, bye bye.
That concludes the three, um. Applicants we have for the, um, Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commissions. Um. Madam Clerk, how would you like us to proceed with the, the voting since it's just the three and we have the three positions?
I think the, the. One way we could proceed would be to either. Motion to accept. The three that you saw, if you feel like you want to. Uh, pause at this point and I can recruit so that you have more applicants to consider for the commission. Then we could also do that, so. That's, I think, the, the question.
Okay, I will, I will go to Vice Mayor to find out what your opinion is. We'll walk down the line.
Well, um, I, you know, I know two of the candidates well enough to know that I'm comfortable reappointing them. And Ms. Shev.
Debbie.
Debbie Chever.
Cheveria.
Cheveria. Okay, and I wrote that down to try to remind myself how to pronounce it, so that didn't work. I, I think she sounds very promising, so. I'm comfortable with the candidates we've got and I'd just as soon. Get our commissions assembled sooner rather than later.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Oro.
I agree.
Councilmember Lamatina?
I agree as well.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz.
I agree and thank you for letting us hear everybody out, but I agree wholeheartedly.
And I as well agree, so, um, Madam Clerk, I mean, I think it's unanimous. There's no.
Can we get a motion and a vote?
Motion to, um, appoint the three candidates that we saw today for the. Uh, Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission, uh, as commission.
I'll second that. We have a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes, and now can we? Have all three people come back in, we, uh, can inform them and I'm sure that they want to do a swearing in at one of the, at, at their next commission.
Correct, we're going to do their oaths of office at their commission meetings. Um, I do need to just ask them to sign up for a time for a photographer for heads, uh, headshots. And I will get them from the other room.
Okay, thank you. And then the parks, how many do we have? Three?
Five.
Or seven? No, no, how many?
Seven interviews for five slots.
Competition there.
How, how did we hit the five? There's not one incumbent coming? Yeah. Appointed Charlie Plummer that wiped out one of the two incumbents. Or the only incumbent.
Well, Gina's an incumbent.
Yeah, I mean. Tech, I mean, that's. Not trying to influence anybody, but.
She's, she's reappointing for her spot.
Yeah, uh, she might, it might be prudent to.
But, but who left? It was Kathy?
Uh, Kathy Marvalati, there it is.
And they did reappoint.
Well, yeah.
And Charlie Plummer.
And Charlie got. Yeah, you have to be those two available.
Well, welcome, uh, both of you back, Nats, Debbie, we appreciate you coming back in, um. Uh, obviously the third person, Barry's out of town, uh, we'll reach out to him. But all three of you, uh, unanimously has been selected to go into, um, the, this, this commission. And we think that, uh, all three of you will just do an amazing job there, so we just thank you again for your interest. Uh, we will have a swearing in for you guys at, um, the next, uh, your next commission meeting, uh, but I know. Our clerk needs to set up times with both of you guys for, I don't typically say headshots, I'm a long enforcement side, I don't say headshots. Pictures. Pictures of the both of you, uh, and Barry, uh, to add to, um, the website and, and the commission. But thank you and congratulations to you both.
We're looking, we're looking good.
Good, good. Um, and. Yeah, I was gonna say we're gonna go to recess, uh, from, what is the time from?
Uh, our next interview is at six.
Six twenty, okay, so we'll, we'll break for recess and we will return at six fifteen, uh, six twenty. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I did.
On my way to the Inverg.
And I did see the bomb.
Thanks.
If you went through, if you went through Seigring, did you go all the way through?
You make my frozen face like on the video.
When I can view this tomorrow, it doesn't have the lady who blocked it off. And then. I think we'll know it too. Let me do that. Yeah, so that's.
I shouldn't have stood on the pizza the whole time.
A laser fishy.
Hi.
I was.
I just said, Eric, I thought it's a hard gun. Okay.
That's what it is.
I'm like, oh, yeah.
It's a wooden one. That was about to.
Who's more? Who even tell us just like this? It's on the corner just like this and everything.
It's on the same street.
It's on the same street, it's on a different corner.
I would come back to the.
We saw, um, when we went there.
I was going there on my way four and I came back.
That's what happened to me.
Security and like I keep thinking the store and someone was in the shop.
She's like, I bought you a jacket. I'm like, okay. Cause I've never really.
No. No?
I know.
I told you I'm on some little. I had my Epping trip this year.
I went twice last year.
Did you? I've been with my mom. She took me when I turned four years. It was really a great trip. The two of us.
Well, I took my kids' passports last night. Actually, I took them into twenty twenty six. So.
There's time.
How old's the youngest?
She's a, my kids are three trauma years. My kids are like, they love vacation. Love and like I thought going flying Japan was the furthest we could go together and they.
They were good.
They were smart.
The food must have been fantastic.
What? Air France? Did you fly on Air France?
No, I flew British Airways. It was sketch. The food was awful.
Air France is the nicest airline.
Yeah, we did Japan and then on my way home, we did Hawaii. So that was my one time out.
We just, we ready to go?
We are, uh, it's six twenty. We, we start back up and then we have to wait for the clerk to get back here. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, we need you back here. No problem, Beth. No problem. It is now six twenty and we are back from our recess. Is it necessary to do another roll call coming back in?
We do not need to, we don't need to do another roll call.
So we could proceed with our, um, special council meeting for. The Parks and Community, yeah. The PCS Commissioners. Do we need to talk about the process with this as well? Or are we familiar with it from the last time we did the, um? Protocol?
Yeah.
Everybody's comfortable with it? Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with the protocol, but I do, would like to remind, we're appointing five people tonight. And two of them are two-year terms or three, three or two?
Correct.
Two.
We have two partial terms that will end in twenty twenty six and then we have three full terms that will end in twenty twenty eight.
And if we call last time, we did it in rank order.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And we ended up filling out the little sheet that essentially, so the ranking is for our purposes. And I guess what the city clerk needs is our top.
Right. So, so when you give me your names, that, that, those don't need to be in any order. I'm just taking the names and selecting them. And then populating the list like that. And then you guys will have an opportunity to discuss everything again before you make a decision.
Yeah. And including who gets the, the three or the four years and who gets the two years.
Yes.
All right.
So we are ready for the first person and it looks like it's Gina. Hi Gina. So, good evening and welcome Gina. Uh, just to give you an idea of what the process is this evening. You will have twenty minutes in total time and the council will have two questions apiece for a total of ten questions. We all thank and appreciate you, one, returning and coming back to put your name in a hat. So thank you for that. Uh, and with all that said, tonight, uh, we will start you off with Councilmember David Orol. Hi Gina. Yep, I know you well, but others in the watching or here on the council may not know you well. So I want you to tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Community Services Commission.
Uh, it is now.
Okay. That sounds a little better. Good evening, Council. So nice to see all these fresh faces and, you know, people ready to serve our community. My name is Gina Griggs and I am also a person who is ready to serve my community. I moved here in two thousand eight with my older daughter, who was nine at the time, and my husband Dennis. And I was about a minute and a half pregnant with our youngest, who is now fifteen, and we moved into the brand new community of Vintage Ranch. And made it our home and American Canyon became my, the center and the core of who I am. And I felt a sense of belonging unlike anywhere else I had ever lived. I grew up in Napa. I went to school at Sac State. Then I went to Vegas where I did my nursing school. Then I went to LA, was there for three years and then moved back home with my preschooler. And then that's when I met my husband and then we moved here to American Canyon in two thousand eight. I've been very involved with the schools. My older daughter went to Visi. I was involved with Visi Elementary. She went to River School. I was involved with River School. My younger daughter went to Napa Junction. The PTA was barely functional when we started there and we were able to reinvigorate the PTA and have, um, Halloween parties and Christmas events where the choir director's dad actually served as our Santa for many years, which was a great connection. And then at that same time, my older daughter was going to the high school and I became very involved with the choir. Where we just finished hosting our tenth annual Choir and Crab Celebration, as it was this year, as we pivoted a little bit and made it a hybrid event. I most recently served on the Parks and Community Services Commission the past four years. I interviewed on Zoom while my house was decorated for Christmas during COVID. So that was fun. And my first six months, meetings were not in person. So I am very happy to be back in person with everything and have meetings in person. I also served on the Ahi Swim Team as a volunteer. My youngest daughter participated in that. I helped out at Spirit Horse. My younger daughter participated in that. Additionally, I am a nurse at Queen of the Valley Medical Center and so my whole life centers around servitude and volunteerism and giving back to the community. I walk my dog every day through Vintage Ranch and, uh, get to see all of the development of Watson Ranch. I help out with American Canyon Community Parks Foundation. And I think that's, yeah, that's it. That's, that's me. I have a dog and a cat and a rabbit and three chickens.
Aren't you with the cat people?
Oh yes, I forgot about the cat people. That's the newest thing. So, um, I started helping rescue cats in two thousand nineteen and then became involved with a grassroots group here in American Canyon who'd been working for many years to rescue and rehabilitate, foster and adopt, um, cats and do something called TNVR, which is Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate and Release. And in November of two thousand twenty-three, we were advised to come together officially and then be able to better serve our community. So we incorporated in November of two thousand twenty-three and we have just finished our first full year of incorporation. And last year, because I just got done writing a grant proposal narrative, I have all these numbers in my head. In two thousand twenty-four, we helped three hundred and seventy-six Scots in American Canyon. We serve solely American Canyon. We are bridging the gap for cat and kitten rescue rehabilitation, foster and adoption here in American Canyon, cause there are groups in Solano and Napa. And there wasn't one in American Canyon. And we are proud to partner with the Napa County Animal Shelter, Jamison Humane and the City of American Canyon. Oh, I'm the Director of Development.
Uh, next will be, uh, Councilmember Lamatina.
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's park and recreation programs and services that we provide to the community?
Thank you for that, Melissa. Um, my vision for Parks and Rec is to continue on the path that we're on right now. To continue to bring more programming, more rec activities. We brought softball back. We brought pickleball. We moved the skate park to a better location. We're doing park improvements. We did an all-inclusive park at North Hampton. We're replacing bark with pore in place so that, um, children and adults in wheelchairs can get to the play equipment. I think that we are on a good track. We improved and updated the user fee schedule. We are making our facilities available for rental. I had my American Canyon Community Cats fundraiser at the Napa Junction Community Center. And I have my Choir and Crab Celebration at the Napa Junction Community Center. I think it is a great space. I've found creative ways to decorate it. So that's exciting and fun. Um, and it's giving our community other places to have events. Rather than the parks or just the Boys and Girls Club. And since we can no longer use the middle school gymnasium because it is fully owned by the school now. I have safety in mind when it comes to parks, safety and inclusivity. Um, when I walk the neighborhoods, I'm always looking at lighting and ground covering and open utilities and, and water access and things like that. I like to be sort of just the medium of the voice to bring the desires and the needs and the wants of the community to the commission and then make decisions that we can take to council that then will benefit the broader community. That's what I feel my role is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, well, thank you for being here. Uh, tell us what you'd like to accomplish if you had another term.
I would like to accomplish more programming, a plan for revamping our aquatics. The pool and the space surrounding it. Um, it's sort of been limping along for a while and I think that that is a worthy investment. Our community really loves our aquatics program and we've been very creative to try and have different programming at the same time, to have more people using the facility at once. But I think that that could be expanded on and would be a big benefit. I would like to see the renaming project complete for Community Park One, Community Park Two and Napa Junction Community Center. Using the names that were submitted to us by community members and residents. And I would like to see additional programming continue and sustain.
Councilmember Cruz.
Hello Gina.
Hello Brando.
So Gina, why should we select you over the other candidates?
I wouldn't say you should select me over the other candidates. I think anyone that's here has an interest in serving our community. And I think that new ideas, like I said, I'm so happy to see all these new faces. I think new ideas and fresh blood, if you will, is always a great idea. We do have a complete turnover. So I wouldn't want you to select me over a more qualified candidate. I would want you to select me because I'm a candidate that can add to the commission and can bring with me the history of what's happened the last four years and guide our new group through the next four years.
Great, thank you.
Okay Gina, my first question for you is describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or policy.
Resistance from?
Anything. It could be anything. It could be presenting cats. It could be whatever.
Well, Pierre, Mayor, Washington, I meet resistance all the time in my life. I meet resistance with pediatric patients in my job. They don't want to have surgery, but they have to have surgery. And so we do it together. I would say that that's how I approach resistance. We do it together. I have cats that don't want to go in traps, but we do it together. You know, you see the food, here's the trap. It's gonna be a good day. This is gonna be a good thing. Let's do this together. You go in the trap, I'll take care of you. You come with me into the OR, I'll take care of you. So I think if we're introducing a policy or an idea that we have deemed to benefit the greater majority of the City of American Canyon, then that's what we're conveying, you know? Let's do this together and see how it goes. And if it doesn't work out, we'll revisit it. We're not forcing anything on anyone. We're truly trying to make decisions and policies that benefit the majority.
Thank you Gina. We're halfway through it. I'm gonna give it back to, uh.
Okay, let's go again.
Gina, give, give an example of a city you visited or read about that has great parks and tell us why. Or alternatively, you can tell us about a city that has poor parks and why.
Well, the most impressive city relative to green space that I have ever been to is Valencia, Spain. And the reason for that is because it was so innovative, what they did. And I think that that is something that we really need to pay attention to in our city right now is innovativeness and visionary planning. Because we have the opportunity to become a destination or a drive-through. We're still right in the middle of that decision-making and I want us to be a destination. I want to be a city where people say, let's go to American Canyon to do that because that's really cool. And we have a lot of those things right now. We have trails, we have wetlands. Um, there are some things that we still need to work on. But in Valencia, Spain, the city is busy and it's beautiful. And there's the old city and then there's the new city and there's the industrial part. But underneath, subterranean, substrate level of the main center part of the city is a green belt that extends the length of the city. And you can walk from the busy city sidewalks, down the stairs or down the ramp. And you can be in this green belt that has, it's, it's as wide as three football fields. And it has multiple trails, it has parks, it has soccer fields. You can walk to the botanical gardens, you can walk to the zoo, you can, you know, they have these, they have this dragon that goes, you know, in and out of the, uh, the sand, if you will, for kids to slide and play on. And it was just so innovative, people walking and riding their bicycles and running and kids playing and all safe from traffic and crossing streets and can get from one end of the city to the other. And I thought that that was just really, really cool and very, very innovative.
Yeah, you painted a very good picture for that. Thank you. Um, next, again, um, Councilmember Lamatina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
My personal philosophy on parks and recreation is that not everything is for everyone. And we have to offer a variety from the horseback riding, um, and the therapy that Spirit Horse provides to the rec swim that Ahi provides, to the pickleball and the softball that the city provides. There is something for everyone and I think that that is how it should continue. And if a group of residents come and say, hey, we'd really like to see this, we should say, hey, that's cool. Let's try that out. You know, let's see if we can make that happen. So we should have a diverse availability of programming and of parks. We should have all-inclusive parks. We should have parks that are just big open fields where people can go play a game of soccer, put up a volleyball net, you know? Or put up their hitting net and practice their baseball swing. So I think it's about diversified programming. It's about inclusive programming and it's about bringing things to fruition. It's, and also about realistic expectations. Because, you know, it took a long time to get that pickleball going. And I think the community probably is like, is this even happening? What's going on? So I think also transparency in our processes, these things take a while. But it's gonna happen. Hang in there with us, you know? Come listen to our meetings, you know, tune in, make comment, send in comment. Tell us what it is that you want, that you want to see, that you want us to do, that you want us to make policy around and we'll do our best to make that happen.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph?
Hey, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the council and the commission? Both in terms of you as an individual commissioner, as well as you as part of the overall commission? How would you improve communications, for example?
Um, I think improved communications come from repetition and interactions. So when we see each other out and about, it's about spontaneous conversations. It's about, hey, I had an idea. It's about. It's about keeping that open line of communication. It's about when Parks and Community Services is tasked with something by council. It's about us sort of figuring out what the community wants and then bringing it to you for decision-making. It's about us kind of more doing the legwork from the community, being that liaison, and then looking to council as that decision-making body. And just continuing to keep transparency and open communication and be able to talk to each other and say, "Hey, what happened with this? Hey, what are we doing about this? Can we look at this?" You know, that kind of thing. And just fostering those relationships. Because if you have a relationship and you're comfortable with someone, you're going to communicate with them better.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Okay Gina, it's me again.
Hello again.
So Gina, what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
I think that our priorities should be, one, being the voice of the community. Two, ensuring that our policies and our processes reflect what is beneficial and fair for our community. So, in other words, doing the user fee schedule. And weighing the individual benefit over the community benefit, you know, making decisions that are for the greatest good. And...
What was the other part of that question? Oh, sorry, this thing is really, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Sorry. The why, and why should we do that? So again, it was, what do you think the city's parks and/or services priorities should be and why?
Well, the why is because that's what we're here to do. Is to serve the community and make our parks and programming the best that they can be for our residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right Gina, I have the last question for you.
Okay.
How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like the three playground replacements, the skate park, the wetland restoration, and the former Napa Junction site, school site?
Actually, I am ridiculously proud of the work that PCS and council and city staff and our director Akita have accomplished in the last two years. It's pretty impressive. Three park improvements, including all-inclusive complete revamp with the pore in place at North Hampton, the paving project and the portable restroom out at Newell, the future plans for Silver Oak, the future plans for, I think the tennis courts are in process, the future plans for Veterans Park, the wetlands restoration, the refurb of Napa Junction, turning it into a community center, having visions for it being completely rebuilt into a complex, moving the maintenance out so that they can have, develop the eco-center for American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, looking at a kayak launch, I mean, and moving the skate park. Like, it's been, it's been a lot of great projects that have come to fruition, which is where the bread and butter is for me. You know, you can sit here and talk all day, but if you don't actually make things happen, what does it matter? And a lot of positive change has happened. And I am very impressed and very proud with the work that has been done in the last couple of years, and I like to see that continue.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I appreciate your time and your interest in continuing to be part of this commission. And I'm also proud of you and what you've contributed to that program up until now. So, we still have a few more people to interview. This concludes our interview. We'll call you back in when we're done with the remaining six people, but thank you again for what you've done.
Thank you very much, I'll see you shortly.
Looking for your laptop? Good evening Scott.
Good evening council. Déjà vu.
Yes it is, yes it is. So, good evening and welcome Scott. Just to let you know the process for tonight's questioning and for the interview piece. You'll have 20 minutes total time, and the council will have two questions, a series of two questions to ask you for a total of 10, 10 questions. We all thank you for just wanting to participate and be a part of parks and community services. And with that said, I'd like to pass the ball on to Councilmember David Oral for your first question. Thank you. Mr. Meyer, can you tell us, tell us about yourself and why you want to be on Parks and Community Services Commission?
Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to interview. I'm Scott Meyer, I have three grown children, married. I live here in American Canyon since 2012. I've been on Kiwanis for four years, I've been the president for two years, the vice president for two years. I've had the opportunity to go through Citizens Academy, which was awesome, I really enjoyed that. I'd like to be on this committee because our city's growing and there needs, there's, there needs to be a need for people, for things for people to do. And I'd like to point out the picnic area downstairs in the parking lot down there. That was our Citizens Academy project. They came to us and said that the kids, when they came here for a field trip, didn't have a place to eat their lunch. They had to sit on the porches, so we organized that little area and put picnic tables in there and planner boxes. Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Councilmember Lametina?
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's parks and recreation programs and services that we provide to the community? My vision is to get the community involved. The community, I don't want to say likes to complain, but always has opinions. And we're doing great things. And I would like to see them get involved, not only in participating in it, but the maintenance of it, helping it and keeping it clean. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
All right Scott, good to see you. Tell us, what would you like to accomplish if we put you on the planning or the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Well, actually, I would really like to be part of the new park that's going in, the kayak ramp. I think that'd be, that's a great thing, and I would really like to be a part of that. Again, I would also like to help get the community involved and help them, you know, at working at our parks, cleaning the parks so that it's not so much budget on our city.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Scott, how you doing?
All right.
All right. So Scott, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Well, I have a strong relationship with the community. I also have, with my job, I failed to mention that in the other one. If my job of 29 years for the Vallejo School District has maintenance, I have the maintenance ability to do these projects myself or to help with these projects and maintain them. I had the opportunity to help coordinate and put in the playground at the Boys and Girls Club. I don't know if anybody has seen that, I was part of that. And again, the picnic area down here, so I think I have the knowledge and the ability to do it.
Great.
Thank you.
My first of two questions for you Scott, is describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or policy.
Well, there's always resistance, so not everybody, everybody has a different opinion. I think communication and awareness is a big part of it. And reviewing what the problem is, and there's always a fix to every problem. So, come up with a plan, come up with a fix, and agree on it.
Okay, thank you. We're halfway there Scott. I'm gonna hand the questions over back over to Councilmember Oral. Mr. Meyer, can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great parks? And can you tell us why? Or alternatively, you can tell us about a city that has poor parks and why?
Okay. If you look it up online, it's going to tell you that Washington DC has the best parks in the country. And that's mostly because of their, their background, their, they have beautiful, they have a nice landscape. They have waterfalls, they have all that. Growing up, I can remember going to Berkeley, to the parks in Berkeley, where they had a little variety of everything for everybody. You could exercise at a park, you could climb rocks at a park, or you could go to a merry-go-round at a park, or... And I grew up with that, in the baseball fields. But then you come to American Canyon, which we have great parks, we have nice baseball fields, we have the Wetlands Edge where you can go and walk and, and exercise and visit nature. There's a lot of nature out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lametina?
Okay, please, please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation. I think as we all found out during COVID, when we were all locked in the houses, people were kind of going crazy. I think our parks open up an avenue for people's mental health, for exercising, social, socialism. They just, people can get out and enjoy people. If you're locked up in a house, you're stare crazy, and I think our parks offer that.
Next will be Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Scott, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the Parks and Community Services Commission and the council, both in terms of you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the team?
Good question Mark. Again, communication and awareness is a big part of it. But it was just brought to my attention a couple of days ago that the commission and the committee only meet once a year, or twice a year. And I think to have a good relationship, we have to meet more, we have to be together more. You might not know Scott Meyer as well as you know SM Fisherman at SBCglobal.net. You're never going to know Scott Meyer if we don't meet in face-to-face and get together and talk about things and fix problems.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Okay Scott, what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
Okay. I think our priorities are not just about our parks, it's about the programs that our parks have to offer. Each one is different. The kayak ramp is going to be for kayaks and people that, you know, love the water. And Wetlands Edge is exercise and... And it's, we do all that without an impact on our environment.
Thank you.
All right, you're almost done Scott, I got your last question. Okay, and you're doing fine. I know it's feeling like you're in the hot seat up there.
Yeah, it is, it's...
I know.
I can sing in front of people all day long, but you guys, it's like, I don't know.
I've seen you do that, I've seen you sing, and I'm like, wow, you know, you're natural. So my last question for you is, how do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with projects like the three playground replacements, the skate park, the wetland restoration, and the former Napa Junction school site?
I love, love, love it. I love the direction that we're going. Our community is growing fast and we're keeping up with that. And we're keeping it up without an impact on our community and an impact on our land. And I just, I love the direction and I'd like to see it go more. I'd like to see more programs come out of these parks and the community. And I'd like to see our community get involved instead of, you know, wonder what everybody's doing and...
Okay Scott, you're off the house seat, off the hot seat right now man. It's over, you can relax again, okay?
Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity.
And we thank you, we thank you for putting your name in the hat, and not just this one, but the other one, the planning commission that you put your name inside of too. It shows that you want to be involved, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, we still have a couple of more people we want to interview, and then we're going to call you back inside here.
Are we hanging out like we did last time?
Yes sir.
Okay, all right.
Yes sir.
Thank you.
But you did fine Scott. It's freezing. That don't just do it, man. Well, good evening Ian, welcome. Glad you were able to make it tonight. Just to let you know the process for this evening. You'll have 20 minutes total, and the council, each one of us will provide a series of two questions to ask you for a total of 10, 10 questions. We all thank you, I thank you for being here tonight and showing interest in participating in a commission that will help shape the city of American Canyon, so thank you. With all that said, we'll start off the questioning with City Councilmember David Oral.
Mr. Smith, thank you for being here tonight and seeing you again. Good to see you again. Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Okay, so I, I've lived in American Canyon for about 20 years with my wife. We have three children, we've raised our family in the community, they're 16 through 22 years old. And then professionally, I have degrees in chemistry and law. I spent almost 30 years in pharmaceuticals, first as a scientist on the R&amp;D side, and then the latter half of my career, I was in regulatory affairs, or I'm in regulatory affairs. And currently, I'm a Director of Regulatory Affairs for AstraZeneca, and I have a team of five. And they range from senior managers to directors, and they're, that's a global team as well. And then we have other support staff and functions. Extracurricula, I have been a youth soccer coach for over 15 years. U8 through U18, boys and girls. And prior to that, I taught martial arts. But when my kids got to about the age where I felt like they needed a little bit more socialization, that's when I went to soccer, got trained, et cetera. I co-founded AC Athletico to bring competitive soccer to the community. That was back in 2011, that's a nonprofit, it's all volunteers. And we've recently introduced the first semi-professional team to the community. That's Junction 29, we play out of ACHS, and that's a men's team who play in the first division for the UPSL. That's Junction 29. We play out of, um, ACHS, and that, that's a men's team who play in the first division for the UPSL. So, um, uh, in terms of my roles, um, at the club, I am the director of coaching on the comp side, and then I coach the, um, semi-pro, um, as well. Uh, so the, the second part of the question, which is why, um, my kids have or are aging out of the soccer, so I'm looking to dial back some of my competitive responsibilities, um, over the next, um, uh, few years, and then give back to the community in a different way. And I, I think Parks and Rec would be, um, a good fit for that. Um, the, the other part of the why is, um, there's a vacant commission, essentially. Uh, so I, I, I feel like there's, there's help needed, um, and you have some important tasks coming up. Uh, not the least of which is the, um, uh, the update to the Parks and Rec, um, master plan. So the last time that was done was in 2012. You approved the budget for the, um, uh, review and assessment back in June of last year, rolling through this year to complete it. So I think there's big, big tasks and obviously, um, some help needed.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Lamartina.
Good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's parks and recreation programs and services that we provide to the community?
So I, I think we want to, you know, across, um, uh, age segments and interests, we, we want this to be a community and a, and a place where people, um, uh, want to live or, you know, aspire to come to. Um, and I think in terms of, you know, broadly, what that would mean in terms of a, um, a vision or mission that would be to offer, um, high-quality, safe experiences that, um, would, um, encourage or enhance healthy lifestyles, um, that would, um, uh, enhance or strengthen the reputation of the community, uh, whilst, um, also, um, uh, showcasing and preserving the, the heritage of the city. So keep, keep, keeping the city's identity as it grows.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, next you'll have Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Yes, Ian, um, what would you like to accomplish if we put you on the commission over the next four years?
Um, so I like SMART goals, which are good for those, certainly those who inform us, specific, measurable, actionable, actionable, uh, realistic and, um, time-constrained. Um, and so, um, the, you know, the broad goal is, um, a, um, would be a, a robust update um, to the master plan, that, you know, that's, that's based on effective, um, community engagement. Um, and then what would, what would, you know, kinda cascade out of that would be the SMART implementation of that plan.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Ian, how are you doing?
Good, my, get a little dry, but no.
Please, have a sip. So Ian, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Well, I met a couple. I'm not gonna speak, they're very nice people, and I'm sure they're, they're just as qualified as me. So I can't really speak to the other people, but what I, what I can tell you, um, is, um, what I think. I think, I think there's big tasks ahead, particularly in, um, 2025 with the, um, uh, master plan, uh, in particular. Um, and I think I have, um, uh, a good skill set. I, I, I do well in complex, um, cross-functional teams. I, um, am passionate about the mission, um, of, um, uh, you know, Parks and Rec or sports, healthy living writ large, so, you know, healthy mind, healthy body, healthy community. Um, I'm 100% on board with that. And, um, in addition to that, I, I have a, um, demonstrated track record, um, volunteering, uh, and frankly, persevering, um, you know, that, that's shown with the 15 years with the soccer program, which, um, you know, uh, hasn't always been a cakewalk, but I think we, we have a pretty good, um, platform, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you seem like you stay pretty busy, scientists, law enforcement, volunteer in soccer, so that's pretty impressive.
There was no law enforcement, that's, although that would have been a good, um...
Well, no, then you say that you did, um, something with the...
I taught martial arts.
But I thought there was another thing that you said.
Legal, lawyer.
Legal.
Oh, lawyer, oh, okay. And I scratched the law.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, the legal piece.
Other side.
Okay, but impressive nonetheless.
Thank you.
Uh, my first question for you is, uh, describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or policy. And I guess your legal hat will come in on that one.
So I'll, uh, start with policy. So a policy, I assume, is something that's been ratified or approved by an appropriate body. And so that's not really, that, that wouldn't be a conversation where I probably have any latitude to affect any change or really take input. Nonetheless, um, uh, I, I want to listen, um, to the person or party. I think all feedback is good. Um, and then I, you know, try to, um, give them context to why the decision was made. Uh, you know, if I can't resolve it through, uh, through that kind of engagement, um, help them to find the appropriate forum to take their concern forward. If we're at an idea stage, um, I, uh, you know, no one's an island. I, I think all, all input is good. Um, if there is resistance, there's a reason, and I, I, I would try to understand that. Uh, 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 see if I can assimilate or accommodate it, um, so.
Okay, Ian, thank you. We're halfway there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give it back to...
Let's see, 11 minutes and 49 seconds.
You seized the clock, okay. I'm gonna give it back to, uh, Councilmember Oral for his second set of questions.
Can you give us an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great parks and tell us why? Alternatively, you can also tell us about a city that has poor parks and why?
So I, I think when I think about great, my mind's going to like Diamond Head in Hawaii or, um, Central Park in New York, but that's probably not, um, you know, relevant to this discussion. Um, I think, um, if I think about a city that is a little bit bigger than us and geographically proximate, so, you know, directionally, it's, it's something we could look to, and it's also, uh, a city that probably faces, um, a similar environment to us, I, I would, um, look at Dublin. Uh, I think they do a really good job, um, in terms of, um, their, their Parks and Rec offerings, their mixture of, um, uh, open space and, and, but then also facilities. They're, they have a, I, I think as an example, um, I think it's Fallon Park or Fallon Sports Center, um, has really great, um, basketball, tennis courts, all-weather soccer pitches. It's really good. But, um, you know, that, that, that isn't, um, by accident. If you, if you look at their website, they have a very robust master plan, uh, which has informed their development. I think it's like 150 pages. So, um, I, yeah, Dublin would be the example.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lamartina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
Um, I, I think, I, you know, first and fourth, you know, so I articulated kinda like a, you know, a vision, which, which, which is, um, something that, um, uh, you know, promotes health, you know, to promote, you know, offerings that promote healthy living, um, enhance the, um, uh, uh, community image, and, you know, and preserve the, um, showcase and preserve the heritage of the city. But I, you know, I think all of that has to be reflected from the community. So I think philosophically, you're trying to, um, uh, capture that vision, but it has to be a reflection of the community. And when I look at American Canyon, I think we're, we're looking at, across, um, a variety of interests, so physical and intellectual, and we're looking across all of the, um, age segments. So infants, toddlers, um, teens, uh, active adults, active adults 50-plus, et cetera. It's all the categories. So I, you know, I think they, um, uh, philosophically, it has to reflect that mix, and, and, you know, hence the importance of an updated master plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
All right. Um, Ian, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the council and the Parks and Community Services Commission? Both in terms of you as an individual commissioner, as well as you as part of the commission?
So I think there, you know, certainly there, there's different ways for teams or groups to bond. I don't know what the, um, the philosophy has been with the council and commission historically, but there's, you know, different ways to do that. But to, to contextualize what a good relationship is and what I would, you know, you know, how I would, I would view that, a, a good relationship is, um, it's of course a two-way street, right? Uh, but, um, it's, uh, based on, um, being, um, reliable, um, valuable, and, and it's, and it's built on trust. And so reliable for me is, um, to, um, to be there, to be present, to, to listen, um, and then, uh, and, and to be, and to be heard to an extent, because it's an advisory role. And then to, um, be valuable is to, um, be, um, transparent, pragmatic, and, um, have, um, sound decision-making. The, the trust part, everybody would like that to be instantaneous, but it really just comes from time and facing problems together, being in the trenches. Um, but that, that, that's how I look at, um, those relationships.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, Ian, what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I, I, I think the immediate priority should be, um, the, um, to, um, enhance and, and update the master plan, and then, um, and, and ensure that the, um, uh, community engagement to develop that plan is robust. Um, so, so we are a reflection of what the community needs. And then, um, the, the pieces that then cascade from that are, how do we fund it? And then the SMART goals to roll it out. I, I think they're the, um, priorities in that context.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ian, I got your last question.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll be off, you'll be off the hot seat. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like the three playground replacements, the skate park, the wetland restoration, and the former Napa Junction school site?
Okay, so I'd, I'd, I'd like to just speak generally about direction, if that, if that's okay, so I can... So I, I, I think in terms of the, the, um, programs that are offered, I think the commands are with the size of the city. And, you know, I think they're, they're, um, uh, on par. I think that we're doing very well with certain, um, aspects of facility. Um, so, as, the new old park, um, uh, the Wetlands, Wetlands Edge. Um, I know Boys and Girls Club isn't really within that ambit, but I think, I think that's a, a, a good asset for the community. Um, and then the, um, renewal of the, um, uh, I'll call them infant slash toddler parks. I, I think all of those things are, um, good. Um, in, in terms of facilities for, um, swimming and baseball, I would say they're on par with most cities. Uh, one area that kind of, that, that does concern me is a lack of all-weather facilities that could support, you know, so I don't think there's enough tennis courts, there's definitely not enough pickleball courts, if you've, um, been there. Um, and then, um, but also facilities for, for, um, football and, um, soccer. I, I think those facilities are important to, um, promote, promote sport. I do think there's a gap in the community, um, with the, um, uh, supporting teen to, um, active adults with regard to sport. Um, and, um, but also something that I think is gonna, will become more, you know, more important sooner than later is that, um, those types of all-weather surface don't require water. Um, and then, and they have lower maintenance, so I think there's a, you know, kind of a, uh, environmental aspect there. Um, the other piece that I think, the other segment I think we're missing is, um, like a bandstand or amphitheater, somewhere where the community can come and listen to music or, or kind of engage. I think that's missing, and that, that's kinda, I suppose you could call it teen, but it's probably more the adult to adult 50-plus segment. I, I think it's, um, underserved there. Um, I see I have three minutes. The skate park, I, I like concrete skate parks. I don't like skate parks that are structures. Um, I used to coach over at, uh, when, when ACMs was opened, I coached there. Uh, and I can tell you, there were some bad behaviors, uh, at night, a lot of, um, smoke in the air, if you, uh, know what I mean. So I, I think, I, I, I think skate parks are important. I just don't like that kinda design, um, so.
Well, thank you, Ian. I appreciate your taking the time and, and wanting to serve the community. You know, uh, I, I like your background and things of that nature as well. We still have three, or four more, um, interviews to do. Um, what we typically will do is have you to go back to the room that you were staged in, and then you'll come back out with the rest of them, once we're done with that final, that final, um, interview. But we want to thank you for, you know, putting your name in the hat and wanting to serve our community.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the time.
Good evening and welcome, Shirley.
Good evening, hi everybody.
Uh, just to let you know the process for tonight, Shirley, I know you've been through it once before. Um, you have 20 minutes for a total of two questions by each one of the council members, which will be a total of 10 questions. Um, I, I actually say we all appreciate you being interested in serving in the community, and we thank you for applying for this position. Um, with all that said, tonight we will start off with, uh, Councilmember David Oral. Uh, David, you have the floor.
Hi.
Hi, David.
Tell us about yourself and why you wanna be on the Parks and Community Services Commission.
Um, my name is Shirley Coat, and, uh, I've been with, uh, living in American Canyon since 2007. And I applied for, uh, Parks and Recs because, um, I feel like that's a good fit for me. I want to be able to contribute directly to the quality of life of our community and their well-being. And, uh, and I wanna be able to, uh, give back. Because there's something said to be, to give back to, to, to a city that you feel has taken care of you, your family. And I work remote, so I take my lunch breaks and I walk our dogs every day. So I go into the parks, you know, and I, um, observe. And I, I, I observe, I, I see the same things, and, um, so there are some things that I would question. Like, you know, why, why is there trash here? Should, would there be, uh, would it be less trash if there's more trash receptacles? You know, that kinda thing, or, um, hmm, you know, would they, should they put more parking spaces here and not there? And just these kinda questions that pop up. And, um, and I thought, you know, I would like to be on the other side of the fence, and instead of asking these questions, I'd like to be a part of resolving them. We don't know how lucky, how blessed we are, privileged we are to live somewhere like American Canyon, where you feel safe walking your dogs, even in summertime when the sun goes down. And, um, having that connection with people that you interact with. I see the same people walking their dogs, and now all of a sudden, we're talking and we're exchanging phone numbers about, hey, you wanna walk dogs together? Or, um, you know, I see the senior citizens in the, at summertime, playing their little music and, and dancing. And I start to wonder, you know... And I start to wonder, you know, ma- they, they wanna move around, they wanna, they wanna, they're interacting and they're having fun. I wonder if a Tai Chi class would be good, you know, just, just to help them move. And those kind of things just pop in my head. Um, and so I would like to be a part of that because, I mean, I'm gonna be honest too, I'm doing it for myself because there's something said to be, to give back. It's rewarding and I want to be able to help others feel the same way I do. Because if we do, then there's more of us taking pride in our city.
Mm-hmm.
And when you have pride of ownership, you take care of what you've got. You see trash, you'll pick it up and throw it. You see graffiti, you're gonna wanna re- report it. You're gonna wanna be active, you wanna be engaged. And if I can be a part of that and impact somebody who next year might want to stand here and talk in front of you guys even though they're nervous, just to serve and, and give back, then that's what I want to be a part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon's parks and recreation programs and services that we provide to the community?
Mm-hmm. Um, you know, the, the programs that we have in place now, um, I'm very impressed with, um, the, the diverse options for tots, for teenagers, for, um, the senior citizens. Um, again, I, I, I was thinking maybe something like a Tai Chi cl- like, I'm sorry, um, what I want to do is, is tell you what my vision is correct. So, um, maybe prioritize some things. Um, not that we're not already on top of it, but just, uh, to be on top of the safety. Um, making sure there's adequate lights or, uh, if a playground is being, um, repaired, to have clear signage. Um, uh, you know, things like that, so safety and, um, because we want to make sure, excuse me, the people who are utilizing our parks feel safe to do so. Um, also the programs, again, I, I, I looked at it and it looked like there's, um, a really good, uh, various options. But, um, you know, maybe a language class. Um, someone told me that that might be something that they would be interested in and I thought, you know, that, that would be a good idea. Um, because you've got, you know, people who are third generation, second generation, who are born here, who are raising their kids and they don't know their first language. So, you know, that, that would be interesting. I don't know, something that would engage teenagers and senior citizens. Senior citizens are afraid of phones and how to work these, you know, um, very easy apps. I know it, it confuses me. And maybe that'll be engaging because kids love phones. Now, again, I'm talking off the top of my head, I don't know if these things have been tapped into or if they're even possible, but those are the things that, that I, I see. Just, um, really maintaining the great programs that we have now and maybe developing more to, to answer the needs of our, our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, Shirley, welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, you might have heard a similar question a couple of days ago. Um, what would you like to accomplish if we put you on the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Um, I, I guess I, it, it would be the same answers. It's, it's great because I don't see that there's a whole lot to, um, to improve upon, but, um, just, just being able to, uh, maintain, develop, so that we can, um, have everyone feel like they can contribute to enhance and improve upon what we've already got. And, um, more engagement, um, you know, you see, it, it's so important, engagement and interaction because that starts to trickle out to, um, feeling a, a part of the community. And that's probably what I think is very important to try and accomplish, to continue that and, 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 uh, build upon that. Um, my husband and I started playing pickleball two years ago and we s- we signed up for, um, the pickleball workshops. And, uh, and it was great. Um, after that, we started going to court and we saw people there playing and we would exchange phone numbers. And now we've got a common interest. And now it starts to, to go out of that and, um, you start feeling like they're old friends and you're just, these people who I just met were, um, exchanging phone numbers to, to meet later. And that makes you feel like you're part of the community. When you're feeling a part of the community, you're not just a resident, you're co-owners of American Canyon. So, uh, that kind of pride, I think is important to try and build upon that. The meet in the streets, those, those, those kind of events gets everybody out, maybe we can do something. I, I know, a few years ago, we had like the, uh, farmers markets. I thought that was great, um, but it didn't really last long and maybe that's something we can try and, and develop to. Just gatherings, diverse gatherings where it's not just families, but there's couples and there's, you know, people taking their parents out, just, uh, more interaction among, among the community, I think.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Hello, Shirley.
Hi, Brando.
So Shirley, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Um, just because I want to be able to contribute to developing the overall well-being of everybody. I know that's what everybody else feels too and that's why they're here. Um, but it takes a lot for somebody who is nervous like this but wants to be a part. And so I enjoy working with people and I work hard to try and work towards the common goal. And, um, I feel like my, observing, my questionings, my, uh, you know, uh, everyday interactions with, with people, my ideas can bring value to the table somehow, some way.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Shirley, you look very comfortable up there. You know, so I, I know you said you, you've been pretty uncomfortable, but.
I have, I still am.
I know you are, I know you, but you're, but you're doing really well, so.
Thank you.
You're at the midway point of the question, so this is the mid, the midway question for you.
Yeah.
Uh, my first question is describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy.
Yeah. You know, um, it's important to first listen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and once that person is done with their message, you've got to be really, um, careful and, uh, considerate, uh, to deliver your message to that person. Um, all that person wants to know is that they're heard and that, um, their, mm, their response, their ideas are, um, going to contribute to the common goal. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know if I can really answer that with, with an answer because, um, I would think that after you, you listen and then you give your comment, that, um, it would be, it would be, um, it would be, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It would be that you can come to that common, common goal together by just paying attention and being considerate in how you, um, deliver your response and how you receive theirs. And, uh, and just make sure that the communication is, is open and that, um, everyone is, is, um, you know, contributing to the, to the, to the same, to the same resolution.
Got you, that, it works for me. So I'm gonna give it to, uh, councilmember Orol for the second set of questions and we're downhill from there.
Thank you. Can you give us an example of a city you visited or right about that has great parks and tell us why? Or you can tell us about a city that has poor parks and tell us why.
I kind of hesitated the last time this question was, um, was, was posed because I, I, I didn't want to, um, say anything negative, um, but this is a question and, and, and I've got to answer it. So, I'm going to say Vallejo as far as the bad parks and I, no disrespect to Vallejo, I was born and raised in Vallejo and, um, I've got people, family there that are, that still live there. But, um, once you take away the, the, the care from the people who live there, who attend the parks, then, then it all, it shows. Um, you start with the graffiti, you sh- you start with, with the people who are, um, just hanging out, just, um, destroying and, and not caring for, for the, the, the preservation of the parks, it starts to go downwards. And, um, that's what I don't want to see happen where we are. Because, again, it takes a community to, to take care of their city. Um, w- once you get, w- once people don't care, then things start to just, just go. And the worse it gets and then you just kind of hope it doesn't bleed any further. Um, but I think it starts with the people. I think it starts with, with the people and how much they, um, trust their, um, their leaders and, and how much they, um, want to contribute and, um, and that's, that's where I feel, if you don't feel safe, you're not gonna go to those parks. If you don't, um, if you don't feel like, um, this is a place that you want to be, you're not gonna go and then that just brings the other side there. And, um, that's where I feel we can go wrong. It's, it's, we just have to make sure that we, um, keep the community engaged, make them feel a part and then, and then get programs where they can help, um, clean up trash and help put together what, what was once great now that it, now it's, it's, um, deteriorating.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
Please share my.
Philosophy.
Philosophy? I guess it's, it's kind of what I had just said to David, just, um, and I feel strongly about connection because it impacted me. Um, and, and most of you sitting here has, has made an impact and seeing what you wanted to contribute to, to the community. And, um, so me, when I had said parks was a better fit for me is, is because that's where I spend most of my time. And that's where people, best time for them to interact and, and gather and, um, you know, start there with, with connecting. And when you feel like you're a part of the community, you want to take care of where you live. And, um, and then you don't just feel like, like it's a park that you, you visit, you start to want to observe and look around and say, okay, where, where is it that, that, um, I can help? Or where is it that it needs improving? Or where is it that, um, you know, um, needs, needs more of this or, or, or more of that? Um, that's, that would be my, my philosophy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, Shirley, how would you go about, um, working on and improving the working relationship between the city council and the Parks and Community Services Commission, both in terms of you as an individual as well as you as part of that commission?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I, I'm not familiar with how the, the interactions work. I, I believe that, um, we come, uh, the, the, the committee for the Parks and Recs would come up with solutions, correct? And then, and then we would, uh, present it to council? Is, is that how?
It can go that way and it can also go the other way where we offer, you know, give you an assignment and you work it out and bring it back. But, so that's kind of how it can work. But how would you work on improving the relationships, the communication, the interactions, that kind of stuff?
Gosh, early communication for sure. Um, and, uh, just making sure that, that we all understand what the agenda items are and then, um, once we come face to face, just be able to have a consideration and, and make sure that each side is heard. Um, once each side is heard and, and the.
You're good, just go ahead and continue. Yeah. It's just a timer saying that you're coming up, I think, like two minutes.
Okay.
It's a thirty-second timer.
Okay, it's a thirty-second timer.
I g- I guess just, once, once both sides are heard, then I would think that we would all be able to just, um, come together and, 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 you know, reach the resolution, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Shirley, what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why? The priorities, what should they be?
Yeah. Um, again, I, I saw, I, I kind of looked at where all the, um, where we are as far as, uh, the programs and the parks and, um, I don't know that there's anything more to, to add upon that, but maybe just making sure that the parks are accessible for everybody. I know that the Northampton Park is, uh, handicapped accessible, um, but I don't know if all the other parks have, have that. I, I know a neighbor of mine who has a couple of children who are disabled and that was always a concern for her. Um, maybe someplace where the, where senior citizens can gather to comfortably, um, maybe more picnic tables so that, I know at the Wetlands, a lot of people like to hike and bike ride, but sometimes they want to pull out their backpacks and have snacks. Maybe something s- a bigger, like, um, a, a bigger, like, maybe picnic area. Um, I d- I do like that the Wetlands, um, trails have the, uh, the, uh, machines. Um, and so it, it's hard for me to speak upon that because I'm so impressed with what we've got going on so far. Um, and, uh, but, but little things can probably be added or, or developed, I would think, but for the most part, I'm just really impressed and, um, just grateful that we have a great selection of parks that, that cater to everybody and, um, and that they're kept safe and they're, that they're clean and we, um, are privileged to, to visit it and, and be a part of, of it, like, whenever we want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, see, that wasn't all that hard there, Shirley, right? Well, you know, this concludes our questioning for you tonight. We just want, I want to let you know, I think you did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. We still have three more people that we're going to interview.
Okay.
So we'll call everybody back in once we're done with those three and then we'll come up with the final, final.
I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Hey, I banged on that thermometer and now it's getting warmer in here. You felt heat? I'm telling you, man. Do not mess with the fist, dude. I feel heat now. Before I was, my hand was like freezing. It's warmer.
My nose is not cold on the tip anymore.
My hands are cold.
Yeah, my hands were cold.
My hands are freezing. I will say I feel a little bit warmer. I don't feel cold either.
Yeah, it's because I banged on the.
Good evening, Elston. We have one of our council members that stepped out just for a quick break. But I mean, I'll, I'll kind of give you the beginning part of what we're going to do. He's already heard it like five times, so. So it'll be new to you. Just so you know the process for tonight. You have twenty minutes total and there's a, there's a clock right there in front of you that's going to be posted with the twenty minutes.
Okay.
To answer ten questions, each council member is going to ask you two questions apiece.
Okay.
And one, we all thank you for even having interest in being part of the Parks and Recs Community Services Committee, Committee, Commission.
Yes.
And just thank you for putting in that application. So with that said, we'll wait for Councilmember Cruz to come back in and then Councilmember David Oral. To my left, will have the floor to ask you the first question, the first of ten.
Yes, sir.
And am I pronouncing your name right? Elston?
Elston. I met you at the senior.
Right, right, right.
With my mother.
I do, I remember. Okay, now that Councilmember Cruz is back, the floor is yours, Councilmember Jo, uh, Oral.
Yes, thanks for being here.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Well, I would like to continue a, a lifetime of service since middle school. I'm from San Francisco, California. Since middle school. Been serving every community that I lived in. My dad and I had a locksmith business in San Francisco as a kid. From that, I went to the US Navy for eleven years. After the Navy, I worked in San Diego. Community-based organizations for a few years and then came back to San, uh, San Francisco, working in community-based organizations. Became a probation officer in Marin County for a few years, still serving and still in San, back in San Francisco now, working for a nonprofit. Managing a healthcare program. So. American Canyon is the only community that I've lived in that I haven't had the opportunity to serve. And when this announcement came out. I stepped out. I wanted to do my part. So here I am. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question to you is. What is your vision for American Canyon's parks and recreation programs and services that we provide to the community?
I have some things written down. May I? I knew once I started talking I would forget some things, so I wrote a vision down, actually. Enhancing green spaces to prioritize maintenance, development of parks, trails and open spaces. To promote community engagement. What events and activities can we have to get people out of their houses, homes and, and connect with each other in the community? Health and wellness. A healthy community is a good community. So what programs can we promote? That, that also promote physical and mental wellbeing, partnerships and collaborations with the different. Local organizations and schools and businesses. How can we partner to serve the community as a whole? And inclusivity and accessibility with the parks and the recreation facilities. They should be accessible to all ages, all abilities, backgrounds with a universal design model. So everybody is accommodated and everybody can come in and, and use these facilities. So, yes. That's the vision I have for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, Elston. If we put you on the Parks and Community Services Commission.
Yes, sir.
What would you like to be able to accomplish over the next four years? Two to four years.
Because this is very new to me and I don't know what to expect. I'm learning this community, so to have a better knowledge of the community, a better understanding of the, the organizations. I was looking, we have seventeen parks. I live directly across the street from one park. So. There are things that are needed at these parks. We have, I think approximately fifty-two organizations. What do these organizations need? We have approximately two hundred and ten activities. I wanted, I wanted to learn these, the, who runs these? Who, what members of the community are parts of these? So I have a lot to learn in this, in this city and. I'm willing to learn these, these, these things. Yes, sir. So in the next four years, I can, I can learn a lot about this town.
All right, great. Thank you. Councilmember Cruz? Elston, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, Elston, why should we select you over the other candidates?
I have a passion to serve. Been serving my, most of my life since elementary school. This is an honor and a privilege to, to live here. I'm from San Francisco. I work in San Francisco, but. I would love to be here more, do more here, contribute more here. And I haven't been able to because I haven't stepped out and, and made the, and just made the steps to do that. So. I believe I will with, with this commission that would put me in a position to contribute. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have the first of two questions for myself. And first off, Elston, thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
I'm a man of the Navy as well, so.
Thank you as well.
Appreciate your Navy service.
Yes, sir.
My first question for you is describe how you might handle a situation if met, if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
Well, we have to listen and hear people's opinion and how people feel about things. Everyone has an opinion. We want to hear your opinion. We want to hear how you feel about this. And it depends on what that policy is. If it's something that it's a drastic change and we have to do. We'll listen and we will prepare people as we implement certain things. We just don't want to drop things on people. And if we have to. I want to say if we have to implement things that are mandatory mandates. Be gentle, you know, be, be kind, be courteous to people, knowing how they feel and they may be uncomfortable with some things, but listen. Listen. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Elston. Well, that's, you're, you're over the hump now, so you're going to the second part of the questions and that's going to go back to Councilmember Oral.
Yeah, can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great parks and tell us why? Or you can tell us about a city that has poor parks and why?
Born and raised in San Francisco. We have Golden Gate Park. We have, we have many parks there, great parks. And it's a tourist attraction. We have people coming from all over the world. It makes it great because the service, the things they have there, the services, what people can be a part of there and. American Canyon is the, the door to wine country, so. It can be as interesting and as nice and, and. How do I say, accepting as San Francisco parks, but Golden Gate Park, it's a huge park. It's a, it's a beautiful park. I can't think of a city that I've been to. I don't want to talk bad about Vallejo, but there's, there's an area in Vallejo with a park directly across from a strip mall. Doesn't look too inviting, but children are there playing baseball. It's a baseball park. It can be a little more inviting, a little more pleasant to the eye, but I compare that to a great park, Golden Gate Park in San Francisco. In Bayview Hunters Point, where I'm from in San Francisco, we have Martin Luther King Park, beautiful park with a beautiful swimming pool. Similar to the one we have here at the elementary school. Just inviting, clean space, safe place. And inviting to the, to the community. And I think that's what makes a, a great park.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
Personal philosophy? How can the community that shares this space enjoy this space pretty much? What can we do? What can I do to make this space better for the community, more inviting, safer? More pleasant for children, elderly and everyone in between? I think that, I think that would, that would be it. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, one of the issues is that you, the commission and the council have to work together.
Yes.
So what are ways that you can see improving that working relationship between the council and the commission? From the perspective, both of you as an individual commissioner, but as you as part of that commission team?
Listening to the council, what's needed. And that was going to be one of my questions at, at the end. What's needed in this role? How can we work together, listening, listening to what's needed? I know this role is an advisory role, so we can just look at things and then come to you. The council with suggestions and, and advice on things. We don't make decisions. We come to you all of the decision makers, so respecting your role. Respecting everyone here, respecting, respecting your opinions. That's how things work, teamwork. We come and advise and the decisions are made by this group. So. Everyone respecting each other and, and, and listening. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cruz? Okay, Elston, what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
Serving the community. Serving from children to the elderly and everyone in between because this is where we live. I think in twenty twenty-three, the population was twenty-one thousand, three hundred and something, like in that area. So we have twenty-one, approximately twenty-one, twenty-two thousand people here. What can we do to make these places, these spaces, safe? For everyone here, accessible for everyone here and enjoyable for everyone here at the same time with everyone being there. You know, not one group being there one day, another group, everyone being there and enjoying it. So. I think that, that will work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Elston, you're almost there. There's a final question for you.
Thank you.
How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like the three playground replacements? The skate park, the wetland restoration and the former Napa Junction school site?
I love it. The other night, my wife and I passed by the Napa Junction. It's now the community center. It was the elementary school. There was a lot of cars there and we didn't understand. We didn't know that was the new community center or the new center. We knew it as the elementary school until it moved near our home, near Gatwall Park. We love the direction it's going. The skate park, I passed by it. We have some graffiti there that needs to get painted, but other than that, it's a beautiful place. Directly across from, from the senior home there, right by the, the veteran center. These are great things. These are things that these young people need. They need to get out of the house and, and, and be outside. So these are great projects. Great projects. I know some of the, I think my wife was telling me. A friend, someone holds a, a dance class or something at the community center over here. So these are things that the community needs. That will get us out of the house and amongst each other. So, yes.
Well, Elston, just so you know, we're going to take care of that graffiti. Okay. But this actually concludes.
I saw it taped off, so I, I know something's been done. Yes, sir.
But I'm glad you observed that.
Yes, sir.
That concludes our questions for you tonight. We still have two more people that we need to interview and then we're going to have you go back into that waiting room.
Okay.
We're going to finish those two applicant interviews and then we're going to call you all back inside. We'll make our decision of who we're going to select. But you did a great job. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. And thank everyone.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Rena.
Hello.
Rena.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're coming in loud and clear, loud and clear. Just want to say welcome.
And just to let you know, I want to kind of give you an idea of what the process is going to look like tonight.
You have twenty minutes total time, the council. Each one of us are going to ask you two questions, a total of ten questions for tonight. You have that twenty minutes to answer them. There's a ticker in front of you that'll give you a twenty minute. Once we start asking that first question, it's going to give you a countdown or a count up, one of the two.
Okay.
I particularly, and I know the rest of the council, want to thank you for participating and you can put your name in the hat. To be a, a part of the community and making the plans to help the Parks and, and Community Services a better place to, to be and to be able to advise us on. On things that we need to do for our parks. So thank you for that. With that said, I'll start off with Councilmember David Oral. And so David, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Okay, well, my name's Rena Mitchell and I've been living here now over ten years. And I was previously on the Parks and Rec Commission. This was about four years ago. I was chosen at that time and I was on the commission, but my husband got stationed to Germany and so we went ahead and went to Germany. So I couldn't continue with my position at that time, but I did enjoy it. I did like seeing what the city was doing. Finding out about what was going on with the city. It's, it's really amazing coming from. A large town, like I grew up in Los Angeles where you're just a little dot. Nobody sees you. And to be able to be in American Canyon where you can be a part of it all. So that to me is really interesting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question is. What is your vision for American Canyon's parks and recreation program and services that we provide to the community?
I've already seen so many improvements. Like I said, when I was in it before, when, that was when the. Exercise equipment was coming, just starting. It hadn't got put in yet. So that was really exciting.
Just starting. It hadn't got put in yet, so that was really exciting. And I'm just looking forward to seeing what else we can do for people in the community, you know, to get more involvement from the community. I myself go to the adult center, and I would like to see more people there. I think there is a lot of people who are not coming to our adult center, and there's a lot to do, and I'm sure there's more to do. I envision some more programs there. I do like a lot of the things that we already have, like the walks and things, maybe in, have more of those. The, I'm talking about the nature walks and things, just having more of those, organizing more of things like that. And just seeing the expansion, because I know we are expanding, so I'm sure there's going to be more expansion of parks and things around the area.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Well, nice to meet you. What, if we put you back on the Parks and Community Services Commission, what would you like to be able to accomplish over the next two to four years?
More programs, you know, I know there's already a lot of things in the works for the city as far as things, more things for the community park-wise, but I'd like to see more programs through the Parks and Rec. And as I said, as an older adult, I would like to see some more programs for older adults also.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Hello, Rena.
Hello.
So Rena, why should we select you over the other candidates?
I guess one of them would be my interest in being a part of the community. I, it really excites me to be a part of a community and to be able to have a voice in the community. So it's not just, oh, I just want to do this, but I would like to see what I can do as a member of this. I don't know exactly what I can do yet, but I do believe that I can bring in some ideas and also listen to other people's ideas and collaborate with people very well.
Great, thank you.
Well, Rena, you're halfway there with all the questions.
Okay.
Okay, this, my first question for you is to describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
Well, when I'm talking to a group, because basically you're presenting to a group, I would try to do my best to present it. If there was opposition, I would hear people out, what it is that they're opposing. And see if I can come up with other ideas, come up with go-arounds, come up with compromises with people. So definitely listening to people, because it's not enough just to have an idea. You have to listen to other people also.
I agree. Thank you. So I'm going to hand the second roll of questions back to Councilmember Oral, and you're almost there. You're halfway there.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, just a point of clarification. You, you mentioned, what commission did you serve on in 2020?
Oh, that was the Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec's commission?
Yes.
You were appointed and then, did you serve on the commission?
Yes.
And, but then you left, what, after a couple meetings or a year?
Um, no, I was there probably for, probably about five or six months before I had to go, yes.
Okay.
But you had to leave because of the military requirement for your husband, right?
Yeah, my husband's at the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so my, my more formal question is, can you give an example of a city you visited or read about that had, that has great parks and tell us why? Or you can tell us about a city that has poor parks, but tell us why.
Okay. City that had wonderful parks, a lot. We were in Japan as part of my husband's work, and the parks there were amazing. Very, very people-oriented, for the locals, definitely. There was a lot of activities and things to do, and there was a lot of different organizations that would come and meet at the different parks. And you would see all this, and that was really exciting to watch. And then as far as bad, well, I just went back to Hollywood where I grew up. It's bad. It's really bad. It's a big city. I know they have the resources and things, but it's just, I mean, you just can't go to the parks. They're just terrible. You know, it's scary to go to the parks, and it shouldn't be that way in any city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
I don't know that I have a personal philosophy about that. I just know that it's a great place for the community to get together, to do activities, to meet people. It's just, it really builds community. It really does.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, how would you go about, if you were on the commission, how would you go about developing a good working relationship with the city council and the Parks and Community Services Commission? Both in terms of your role as an individual commissioner, but also as part of the overall commission itself?
I, I go back to, again, my listening skills. It's, again, you can come up with ideas, you can talk to people, but listening is a big part of things. And I think, I'm very much a people person, so I like talking to people. I like listening to people. I like collaborating with people, you know, and I'm pretty easygoing also.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, Rena, hello again.
Hi.
So what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
Definitely programs for children. We are a young community, you know, we have a lot of great schools, and the parks and rec are part of that whole. It should be an extension sort of of the schools, all the different programs available to children. After-school programs, enrichment programs, nature programs, things like that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Rena, this is your last question.
Okay.
And you get, and then you get to get out of here. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with projects like the three playground replacements? The skate park, the wetland restoration, and the former Napa Junction school site?
I'm really excited about all the changes I see. It's, like I said, I've been here a while. I was like one of the, one of the first or second Citizens Academy participants and things like that. And just seeing all the changes we made and all the things that we're doing, it's wonderful. It is really exciting, you know? The, the night programs that we have, the astronomy nights and things like that, it's amazing. And to see the participation, especially of all the children, it's really wonderful. So I think we're doing great as a city. I am really excited about what we do.
Thank you. Well, we, I appreciate you being interested in, in being part of the Parks and Community Services. We still have one more interview that we have to do, and then we're going to bring everybody back in. I know typically we, we tell people who are in the military that thank you for your service, but I think you, being the wife of a service member, has the toughest job, even tougher than a service member, because you have to be strong to be able to withstand being the spouse of a military person. So thank you for your service of a service member.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Mitchell.
Hi, Glenn, how are you?
Fine, yourselves?
I'm good, I'm good. Just so you understand and know what the process is this evening, I'm kind of going to give you an overview, high-level overview of what you're going to expect.
Okay.
First off, you got twenty minutes. There's a little clicker right in front of you that's either going upward or downward for the twenty minutes. Kind of give you an idea of how to pace yourself with the answers. Each one of the council members is going to ask you two questions, which totals ten.
Great.
And you have the twenty minutes to answer it. I appreciate you put your name in the hat for this position. I'm sure the rest of the council members as well. And I'm sure the community appreciates you doing this and stepping up, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
With all that said, and we'll start off with Councilmember David Oral. David, you got the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Could you tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Community Services Commission?
Well, my name is Glenn Mitchell. I am currently employed by the U.S. Department of Defense with the Army Corps of Engineers in San Francisco. I'm a project manager, and I've worked on projects literally around the world for the Corps. I've been living in American Canyon for the past twelve years. This is the first place I've really settled down and kind of established roots. And I'd like to do something to participate with the way the, the city is run. I went through the Citizens Academy a few years back before I left for Germany, and I really enjoyed it. My wife had gone through it first and recommended it to me, so I went through the curriculum and said I was really, it was fascinating. So this seems like a chance to do something, learn more about the community, and maybe offer, you know, my expertise and my help that might assist other people. You're very welcome.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Hello, thank you for being here. My question is, what is your vision for American Canyon's Parks and Recreation Programs and services that we provide to the community?
Well, I've been very impressed by what I've seen so far. I live down by Wetlands Edge, so I love the trails through there, the, the bike trails, the walking trails, and getting a chance to go around and explore the wildlife down there. I was really impressed when the whole gymnasium system was put in. I was really struck by how effective, efficient it is and also how structurally sturdy. So I, you know, some, things like that, I like expanding the range of possibilities and options to include more people. I'd like to find out about the various programs that are offered as well, and again, maybe diversify that, look more towards stuff that involves aspects of environmental restoration, environmental, you know, appreciation. My background is, I'm a geologist with a, with a background of, in environmental engineering and investigation. So I'm really into, like I said, the whole landfill restoration, the way that the area has been reclaimed. Seeing things like that, I'd like to see something comparable done to the new open space. Again, expand, expand access and still preserving the habitat issues of it and so things of that sort. So again, public outreach programs that explain to people what's available, and again, diverse options so that you can include more people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Glenn, if, if you're appointed to the commission, what do you think you could accomplish in a two-to-four-year period?
Whatever you folks need. I'm not really sure exactly what the role of a commissioner would be, but I'm looking forward, looking forward to the chance to learn it and see what I can do with it, and again, grow into the position. So I don't have any clear visions or ideas of what I could accomplish, but open, open to suggestions and opportunities.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Cruz.
Glenn, good evening.
Good, good evening.
So Glenn, why should we select you over the other candidates?
I don't know what the other candidates have to offer, but I assume all of you are looking for a diverse range of backgrounds and experiences. I don't know if you have anyone else around here who has a background, like I said, in environmental restoration, environmental compliance. That's one thing I can bring to the table. Plus, I, I understand wetlands issues, because again, I worked with the Corps of Engineers. I've had some involvement with permit, with the people on the permitting side and with habitat restorations. I did a bunch of work down at the former Fort Ord Army Base for their BRAC program back in the nineties. So I saw a lot of, again, habitat restoration areas out in the beach ranges and things of that sort. So that's kind of a specific area of expertise I would bring to the, the team. I don't know what else you have or what you're looking for. That's one thing I can offer you.
Great, thank you.
Well, as I'm, I'm also a project manager and have my, my project manager, management institute PMVP.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Glenn, are you halfway there?
Oh, hey, I talk fast too, as you probably have noticed. If I'm speaking too quickly and not clear, please let me know and I'll slow down.
Oh, no, you're very clear. We understand everything you're saying.
Glad to hear it.
You're fine, so.
Thank you.
So my first question for you is going to be, describe how you might handle a situation if you were met, if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
Oh, my God. As, as a project manager with the Corps of Engineers, I have to work with a fairly diverse team that generally will include my, people who work for the Corps, a sponsor agency, like I do a lot of work for the U.S. EPA. And so they have their own corporate culture, and then you start getting involved with local stakeholders, local governments, or public interest groups. So the, the thing that I've discovered, the best thing to do is get everyone together and listen and try to find the points of commonality. And then point out to those people, okay, here are the things we agree on, and if we can agree on these pieces here, let's see how we can include as many of those as possible in our final solution. So again, look for the points of commonality and build on those.
Okay, good answer, Glenn. I appreciate that. Now, like I said, we're halfway point. We're going to give it back to Councilmember Oral for his second question.
Thank you. Can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great parks? Or you can tell us about a city that has poor parks, but tell us why.
When I, I spent two and a half years in Okinawa with the Corps of Engineers and got a chance to see the parks that were located there in, you know, in, in the prefecture. And there was, for a small island, they still had a very diverse collection of parks. Most of them were like in the coastal areas, so there was a lot of beach access. And even the ones that were inland, there was, again, it was a tropical island, so you had a lot of nature included. By the same token, they had a number of ones that were set aside very specifically for playground structures for the kids. Although, the Japanese idea of playground structures is almost the same as if you look like a military obstacle course. The sorts of things that here would be impossible due to liability. We're talking about massive climbing structures or concrete slides that were easily three stories tall. But it, it worked over there, and so it was very intriguing to see it, see it from that standpoint. And when I was in Tokyo, similar, again, the intense urban area, but they would set aside green spaces for public access. So I did like, again, the, the parks I encountered there. Over, my personal preference, I like parks that have a real natural setting, like I said. It ties back to, to my environmental background and my, you know, my love of geology. So one of the reasons I really cleaved to the Wetlands Edge, because again, the natural habitat and watching the migratory waterfowl come through. I'm, I'm not real big on, you know, organized sports, so, you know, tennis courts or soccer fields don't really appeal to me, but I understand there are others who like them. So I guess one of the real keys for a, a good park structure is diversity. Knowing what sort of range of things your people want and seeing how you can provide as many points of commonality. Like I said, bike trails, the exercise equipment, places for, you know, skate parks for the kids. I, I remember when those first started to come on, come online back, again, I was doing some military planning for various army installations overseas, and skate parks had suddenly become a big thing that they, a lot of them wanted to include because it was very popular for the kids, helping them develop those. So that sort of thing. Does that answer your question, or am I meandering?
You were just to give us an example?
You were just to give us an example, there was no question.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So, but thank you for that thoughtful answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Please share with us what your personal philosophy is regarding parks and recreation.
Oh, boy. Well, two separate pieces. Parks are open spaces that are designed for the benefit of the community. National parks are kind of the, one of the hallmarks of the United States and interestingly enough, most of the national parks in the United States are either based on specific geologic phenomena or historical incidents like, like old battlefields. But if you look at like all the parks pretty much in the western part of the United States, it's geology that drives them. So, yeah, toot my own horn there. So that's parks. Parks are, parks are community spaces for people to enjoy. Recreation is something to get your mind off of work and recreation is is very much of a personal thing. So, you know, for some people, that is team sports. For me, it tends to be, you know, beekeeping or gardening or scuba diving or, like I said, walking in nature. So for recreation, the matter of you have to poll the community, find out what sort of things they want or or want to use and providing pieces that again, covers as many bases as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Okay. If you were on the commission, um, these are, it's hypothetical because that's the exercise we're engaged in. How would you go about trying to improve the working relationship between the council and the commission from the perspective of both you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the overall commission?
Well, it's, kind of gets to like the heart of project management. It's all, it all really comes down to communication, finding out what people need, what they're looking for and finding, again, tho- those points of commonality. If there's strife with the commission, you find out what's driving it and try to resolve those points of friction. If it's just, you know, personality conflict, you take the people who are in conflict and see about finding, finding resolutions for them. It's, it's not really a science, it's more of an art. And again, the essence really is communication and active listening.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Cruz.
All right, Glenn. So what do you think the city's parks and/or community service priorities should be and why?
Again, personal comes down to preservation of open space and habitat, as much of that as possible, a great, but you have to balance that with access because setting aside a nature preserve is great, but if people can't access it at all, they're not going to be as interested in preservation. So you got to find, find that balance point between preserving the natural world and still letting people have access to it. And, uh, I understand American Canyon is going to be growing. Again, you'll you'll look at how much development is going on, so preserving as much of the open space as possible and still providing recreational opportunities as the population grows. And again, find, finding that balance point between the two or between all the competing factors, the the juggling act, shall we say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Glenn, you hit the last question. All right.
Drum roll, please.
At, there you go.
Long as there's no higher math involved, I didn't bring my calculator with me.
Okay, well, I actually noticed you said you're not into the sports and stuff like that. I was going to ask you about if you knew who the Philadelphia Eagles were and where they were going in a couple of weeks, but I guess that's a moot question for you, right? Well, my real true question is, how do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going?
Oh.
With projects like, like the three projects, the, that we're doing with the playground replacement, the skate park, the wetlands restoration and the former Napa Junction school site?
It sounds, to me, again, you're, you've just described things that touch on a lot of the points that I think were very significant. Again, preservation of open space, providing, you know, community spaces like the skate park and developing the resources that are here. So I would say it sounds like you've got a good balanced approach to covering all those pieces and again, addressing the issues, issues that will come along with expansion of the city.
Okay, good, good answer, good answer. Well, that concludes the questions that we have for you tonight and typically we would tell you to go back to the room, but now that we're going to ask everybody to come here, we're going to have Nicole bring everybody else in, you could have a seat.
I'm going to go grab my stuff and I'll be right back, okay? I left some stuff on the table.
No problem. So you want to get back, Glenn?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to get an update on Ms. Mitchell.
Yep. So I, we, I did locate a document. In 2019, she was appointed to the Education and Lifelong Learning Element Advisory Committee. There was about 20 people that applied, they were all appointed to serve on a, on a special committee in support of general plan, right, if that makes sense? So that, I think she was just confused about what she actually was doing, but she was appointed to that.
That's fine, that's fine. That makes sense, yeah. Gotcha. So welcome back, everybody. We're, we're casting our votes in now, we're going to send it to our, our clerk, our city clerk, and then she will tally up the, the scores and let us know where we are. But I want to say thank you for all of you for staying and hanging out with us this evening. Seriously?
Slow focus over here.
You made it like a football?
No, I made it an airplane.
It's an eagle, it's an eagle, David. I don't really want to talk about the Super Bowl. The Chiefs and the Eagles. I'm sure you did. There's one, I got one more waiting.
Tabulations here.
Okay, so the city clerk is going to read off the calculation, how many votes each person got. And correct me if I'm wrong, the top two get the four-year, the top three get the four-year, seats and the next two, number four and five, will get the two-year remaining.
I believe that's what council decided how they wanted that to go.
I just want to make sure that everyone here knows.
Okay, so.
Top three will get the fir-, the four-year, uh, seats and the number, number four and five will get the two-year seats. And I can explain the two-year seats, why we have two-year seats.
Yeah. Would you like, I can explain that really quickly. So we have a staggered schedule of two years so that we always have some seasoned or experienced people still on the commission, so we don't have a situation like now where we have five empty seats, right? What's happened is we've had some people leaving and also someone moved to a planning commission that was on that commission, so that gave us five empty seats and so we're continuing to stagger them. So the two, uh, partial term are actually filling the partial terms that are still available but have been vacated and then the three four-year terms are the three new terms that normally would have expired in 2024, if that makes sense to everyone. Okay? So I'll just get to it. I have Gina Griggs with five votes, Ian Smith, five votes, Elston Mallory, five votes, Scott Meyer, four votes, Shirley Koot, four votes, Glenn Mitchell, two votes, and Rena Mitchell, no votes.
Okay, so based on these numbers, um, Gina will get a four-year, uh, seat, Ian will get a four-year seat and Elston, you will get a four-year seat. Scott Meyer and Shirley will get the two-year seats. Okay? Congratulations to those who made it, okay?
I just need a motion and a vote.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that the council appoint, uh, Ms. Gina Griggs, Ian's, and Mr. Ian Smith and Mr. Elston James Mallory Jr. to the Planning Commission for four-year terms. I'm sorry, Parks and Services, uh, Parks and Community Services Commission for four-year terms and also appoint Mr. Scott Meyer and Ms. Shirley Koot for two-year terms to the Parks and Community Services Commission.
I'll, I'll second that. We have a second, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oral.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes. And congratulations to those who are moving on to the commissions and for those who did not, I just want to say thank you for putting your name in the hat and showing that you are interested because it means a lot that we have people that are passionate about the community. There are other opportunities that the city is going to have that I hope to see you guys put your names in for those as well. But I'd like to congratulate those who have made it. For tonight, we've concluded our business for this evening unless anyone here on council has any last minute statements.
Just want to tell them they'll do the swearing in at their next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the swear, I thought I said that, I didn't say that?
No.
Okay, maybe I did, okay. Yeah, the swearing in ceremony that, um, would, will take place at the PCS Commission. Most of us were trying to make that, that swearing in as well, um, but you have to arrange, do we have to do the arrange for the pictures as well?
Yeah, so, um, we will be conducting an orientation for everyone. We'll be issuing an iPad for your use on the commission, so, um, I'll be reaching out to you, uh, probably by the end of this week with, uh, orientation dates coming up in February. Our first commission meeting is going to actually be in March, so we have a little bit of time, but not too much. And Nicole's coming around with a sign up for our photography appointment, uh, to get, headshots taken for the website.
Okay, so that concludes our business for the night. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.